We can recommence our meeting and we are now on item number 14. No, we're not. We're on item number 16. So let me, one moment. My computer crashed, so I have to pull this up again. So we're under second reading of ordinances now. The subject is the municipal code amendments to adopt glazing and lighting regulations to implement the fiscal year 19 to 20 city council work program items related to dark sky and bird safe design. Is there a staff report on the second reading of this ordinance?
Mayor Paul Ben Fu, Director of Community Development. We don't have a presentation besides the staff materials, but we have Eric Strano, Senior Planner here if the city council has any questions.
Great. Well, thank you, Ben, and welcome, Eric. Are there any questions of staff prior to bringing this over to the public for commentary? I don't see any hands raised from our council, and so I will bring this over to our public. And I'll remind the public that as soon as the first speaker is done speaking, you will need to have had your hand raised on Zoom in order to be called for this portion of the item. We have two hands raised at this point. They are from Rick Kitson and Shawnee Kleinhouse. And as I was speaking, we have Lisa Warren and Connie Cunningham as well. Welcome, Rick. You'll have three minutes.
Thank you, Mayor Paul and council members. Thank you also to the staff and the many community members and groups that have worked so hard on this ordinance. As has previously been indicated by the chamber and its members, there are many opportunities for improvement of the language. In on the previous item, there was some discussion about the importance of objective standards, and I think that is absolutely needs to be the the long-term goal of this ordinance. That being said, I think it's important that the council move forward with this and that there is no doubt that given time that we will be able to better refine and clarify the requirements that this ordinance requires in order for us to be a safer and more sustainable community. And that's all. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much, Rick. Our next speakers are Shawnee Kleinhouse, Lisa Warren, Connie Cunningham, and finally, Dashal Leeds. Welcome, Shawnee.
Good evening, Mayor Paul, council members. Thank you for all your work on this and thanks staff as well. Been a long process and hopefully you will move forward tonight. I also wanted to thank the Chamber of Commerce. It's rare for an organization like mine to work with the Chamber of Commerce. And I think overall we are in more agreement and disagreement and promise to continue working together, which is quite exciting. This would be the first dark sky ordinance in the Bay Area to my, the best of my knowledge, definitely in Santa Clara County, and that's really exciting. So even if it's not perfect yet, there is time to make it perfect. And there is time for others to learn from it and improve upon it. This is true leadership on both the bird safety and the dark sky. And I really, really thank you. This has been a very interesting, exciting and wonderful process with all the setbacks and everything else. And thanks all the city council members that worked so hard and staff. And you, Mayor, thank you. Hopefully, go ahead and move it tonight.
Thank you, Shawnee. Our next speaker is Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. Oh, thanks, Kirsten. So, well, I'll go with this first because the picture's up. This is what I consider an excellent example of glare. And I sent this last minute to be shown because there was a comment in a letter from Chamber. And I, you know, there's a perfect example. And at night, this same building is lit up inside, or at least it used to be. It's six stories high. It's across 280 from the home window that it was taken from with Jenny Strand Park in between. And that's what they wake up to in the morning. Not so nice. So there's glare. I don't know how you can define it. That's what it is. And it can be worse. And it is worse. So now on the positive note, which I was going to start with, again, I thank everyone who's worked hard on this in all parts of the community and the city. And I urge you to go ahead this time in solidifying it with the second reading. And I want to thank Councilmember Moore for adding to the motion the first time around that, you know, give this a year at least and go back and see where we're at. So thank you all.
Thank you, Lisa. Our next speaker is Connie Cunningham. Welcome, Connie.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Councilmembers. As you can imagine, I am excited to speak tonight in favor of item 16 for the enactment of the ordinance number 21-2225 for Bird Safe Design and Dark Skies Ordinance. I thank the city council for bringing forward this idea in the first place in the city work plan. And I thank the city staff for their excellent work in writing this ordinance and listening to all folks from the Chamber to the Audubon to residents like me. Not only will millions of birds' lives be saved, excuse me, with bird safe design and dark skies, but human beings will also live longer and healthier lives. Thank you so much, and I hope you enact it tonight.
Thank you, Connie. And big kudos to all the speakers for being succinct. And finally, we have Dashal Leeds. Welcome.
Hello. My name is Dashal Leeds. I'm the Conservation Assistant for the Sierra Club Loma Prieta Chapter. Thank you, Mayor Paul and City Council, for the time to speak. I'd just really like to thank everyone involved, city staff, the council. This has been a long and sometimes difficult and complicated process, and I'm really excited to see where we've landed here. This is an amazing ordinance. It's going to have a really positive impact on the community, and I'm really excited to see it take effect and to see it spread to other cities. I think this is one of those pieces of legislation that, very much like reach codes, may sort of be swept up and adopted by a lot of different cities. And I would love to see that. I would love to see our birds be universally protected and our night skies get clearer and are help get healthier. So thank you so much for your time, and I really hope you approve this tonight.
Thank you, Dashal. We will bring this back up to council for a motion to entertain further discussion. Would anyone like to bring a motion?
I'd like to do that, Mayor.
Councilmember Way.
Okay. I move that ordinance number 21-2225 be read by title only and that the city clerk's reading constitute a second reading thereof. And I further move that ordinance number 22-2225 be in effect.
Would anyone like to second Councilmember Way's motion?
I'll second.
Okay, Councilmember Willie seconds. Are there any discussion points from any member of council before I bring it to the city clerk for that second reading? Councilmember Way.
So I'd like to say that I do understand the chamber's concerns about the glare and attitude. These are pretty not objective but subjective, but it might have a good use too because adequate for a parking lot may not maybe different from adequate for a, you know, restaurant entrance. So so let's try this and and work on it. And so it's time to move on. And if we need, you know, a couple years need to come revisit, we can always do that.
Thank you, Councilmember Way. Any other hands on this item? Okay. Madam City Clerk, if you would please conduct the second reading of this ordinance.
This is the second reading and enactment of ordinance number 21-2225 and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Cupertino amending city code to add 19.102 glass and lighting standards and to amend chapter 19.40 residential hillside RH1 zones, chapter 19.60 general commercial GC zones, chapter 19.72 light industrial ML and industrial park MP zones, and chapter 19.124 parking regulations to implement bird safe and dark sky policies, which includes a finding that the proposed actions are exempt from CEQA.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. If you would please conduct the roll call vote now for the motion.
Councilmember Moore.
Aye.
Councilmember Way.
Aye.
Councilmember Willie.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow.
Aye.
Mayor Paul.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. Our next item is item number 17. The subject is to consider whether to authorize the formal submission and processing of a general plan amendment authorization, amendment authorization rather, for change the land use designation from low density to low medium density with the rest of the item available in the agenda. Would staff like to kick us off with a presentation? And I see we have several members of staff that have now joined us, including Director Fu, and I assume that you'd like to introduce this item.
Yes, Mayor Paul. Thank you very much. Ben Fu, Director of Community Development, with me tonight. We have John Martier, Senior Planner, also is the project manager for this project. John has a presentation for you, and afterwards you'll be happy to answer questions. So with that, I'll hand it off to John.
Thanks, Ben. Good evening, City Council, Mayor. Thanks for the introduction. Again, I'm John Martier, I'm Senior Planner with the Community Development Department. I'm here to introduce and present the general plan amendment authorization. Let me just share my screen really quick. Can everyone see that?
Thirty-four.
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so this is general plan amendment authorization for the first cycle of applications for 2021. Quickly, before I get into the actual proposed project, a little background on the process and criteria for evaluation. Proposals for general plan amendments are evaluated twice per year. And they're basically evaluated on these criteria. The first is the general plan goals, you know, what are the site architectural design and neighborhood compatibility. Fiscal impacts include a diverse economic base, provisions for affordable housing, environmental sustainability. Then staff, I look at general plan amendments requested. And then we look at the voluntary community amenities, which includes school resources, public facilities, amenities for open space, as well as transportation. And then finally, we look at staff time and resources required. And we'll go through all these points throughout the presentation. So where are we at in terms of the process right now? So really, we're just at the beginning. The general plan authorization, amendment authorization process is really colloquially known as a gatekeeper process where it's, you're not approving the project yet. You're just approving an application for a project. This doesn't, any authorization to go ahead with a submittal does not, does not mean that the council approves the project. You know, it can allow the project to submit and then not approve the project in the end. So we're really at ground zero right now. So we're at this, as you can see, with circle in red where the city council hearing, where a city council can have has two choices, really to authorize to apply for the GPA, which will allow the applicants to submit application, staff, or not authorized. And if it's not authorized, they can, the applicant has two choices. That is to resubmit with minor amendments in 30 days, which if we go back to city council, or to reapply in one year. And then that just restarts this whole process again. Next steps, again, like I said, no general plan amendments are being adopted at this time. Projects are authorized by the council to move forward, enter the formal development review process for project review and environmental analysis. The last two projects to go through the general plan method process were the two hotels, the Anza Hotel and also the hotel on Wolf Road. Timeline is expected to run for about seven to nine months, maybe even longer than that. And again, as stated before, projects may resubmit within three days with minor adjustments based on council input at authorization meeting, follow-up council consideration later in spring 2021. Specifically, so this project or this application is for, is the title is GPA Authorization 2020-001, and it's to consider whether to authorize a formal submission and processing of a general plan amendment authorization for a change to land use designation from low density, one to five dwellings an acre, to low medium density, five to 10 dwellings an acre, which will allow construction of four small single-family homes where one single home, a single-family home currently exists. And the address for the site is 19820 Homestead Road. So this is the site right here. It's probably the most common comments I get is that, is this really Cupertino? It appears to be Sunnyvale. So, and yes, it is Cupertino. It's just kind of hanging on there, just hanging on the border right there along on the south side of Homestead Road. And it's basically surrounded by Sunnyvale with the exception of the PG&E parcel to the, to the west of it. The Sunnyvale sides of the property are, are basically detached single-family homes. And so, excuse me, the lot itself is about almost half an acre, and it does currently have a, I would say, approximately a 2,000 square foot single-family home right now. It's owned agricultural, 43, which means that the minimum size for a home of a parcel with this designation would have to be 43,000 square feet. As stated before, at low density, a one to five dwelling units an acre. And again, it's surrounded by primarily single-family, with the exception of the PG&E service yard. So the GPA authorization as requested is a change of land use designation from low density, one to five dwellings, negative to media, low to medium density, five to 10 dwellings an acre. Again, this would enable the applicant to construct four residential parcels. In this case, as you've seen, to the attached project scope and project plans, it would essentially be four detached single-family homes. Two of them would have two attached accessory dwellings. Part of the application provided 3D modeling of what these homes would look like. And this is, we talked about the site architectural design, neighborhood compatibility. And again, these aren't, these aren't what we consider multifamily developments. This would be still considered detached, single-family developments, similar to Wood Next Door, although this would probably have a higher FAR or block coverage standards than those neighboring single-family parcels living in the city of Sunnyvale. Against typically what we do if this was to move forward, we'd have, we'd hire an architecture consultant to look and, and based upon city council feedback tonight to see, you know, is this compatible? Does council like this architecture? Or would council want to see something a little more unique and whatnot? Or something that matches the surrounding area? And but again, this is up to council at this point. And again, you can see how the, the site's laid out, four parcels with one separate driveway parcel right now. Again, the, the front two, the two parcels to the north that are closest to Homestead Road are the ones that have ADUs. Net fiscal impacts are, our consultant from EPS estimated that the proposed project would have a $9,300 net positive annual fiscal impact on the city's general fund. This is a net increase of $7,600 from the existing use on site. Affordable housing, environmental sustainability, affordable housing. This project does not require onsite affordable housing because of it's, because it's only for single-family homes. And there's none anticipated or none proposed by the applicant except for the applicable housing mitigation fees that they would have to pay. And that's all outlined in the staff report. Environmental sustainability, the project would be required to either be GPR certified at minimum 50 points, LEED Silver, or alternative reference to be consistent with the city's green building ordinance. Voluntary community amenities. The applicant has not proposed any voluntary community amenities. So the total value per square foot of qualified community amenities is $0 per square foot. And environmental impact, again, at this stage of CEQA, this does not apply since the council's action consideration authorization of formal application is not a project as defined by CEQA. Project level environmental review will be conducted for projects that are authorized to move forward with applications for general plan amendments. In terms of public noticing and outreach, there was a postcard mailed out last month to all postal customers of Cupertino, at least. A site sign, site signage was placed at least 10 days prior to the meeting. And I think it was our presentation. I know the applicants are, give our presentation themselves. So many of the questions that regarding their application and, and how they approach this project can probably best be answered by them. Thanks.
Great. Thanks, John. And did you say that the applicant has a presentation at this point?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, let me check our process here, and we'll make a process check with the city attorney. At what point is the applicant provided the opportunity in our process flow to give a presentation? Because I thought that was sometime after our initial presentations here.
Yeah. Sorry, Mayor. So yes, we'd have the staff report and then the applicant, applicant presentation would come.
Okay, great. Are there, are there any other staff report items? Director Fu, before we move to the applicant?
No, please move on to the applicant.
And council can ask clarifying questions now or after the applicant presentation.
Okay, well, I don't see any hands up from council at this point. So let's go ahead and make it omnibus questions. We have the applicant here, and you have up to 10 minutes. So welcome. And is the applicant, who's the applicant here? If you could unmute your mic. Michael? Okay, welcome. You'll have 10 minutes.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Hi, Council. Thank you for having us tonight. I'm speaking on behalf of the ownership team. We're excited to present our concept and vision for 19820 Homestead Road. So our team has a strong local connection, and we're all based out of the immediate area. So I grew up in Cupertino. I graduated from Mont Vista High, and my uncle Tommy was a former school board president, and he served the community for eight years. All of our team members are active members of this community and who we all are very familiar with the city. So with the property, we saw an underutilized parcel right along the northern gateway to the city, and we saw an opportunity to bring it to life and create something which nicely complements the existing neighborhood while incorporating a natural feel and sustainable features. So in that regard, we wanted to find an architect who could help us achieve that vision. So we contacted Belma Architects out of Palo Alto. They're locally based. They've won numerous awards for their work, including the prestigious Spurge Clark Award for Design Excellence. And they've done a number of notable projects off El Camino Real and up the peninsula, and we're very glad to have them on board. So with that, I'll hand it over to Pratima of Belma Architects. Thank you.
Good evening, respected council members, city officials, and the residents of City of Cupertino. My name is Pratima Shaw. I'm the project architect, and I'm delighted to present our proposal for general plan amendment on behalf of our client's Homestead Homes. The property of 19820 Homestead Road has 2,500 square foot, one-story, single-family residence with a detached garage. The gross area of the property is 21,780 square feet with 25 feet future easement along Homestead Road, resulting in net area of 19,095 square feet. The current zoning of the property is A143, the agricultural residential with minimum size requirement of 43,000 square feet. There are only few A1 properties in City of Cupertino, and this is one of the smallest of them. Agricultural residential zones are intended to preserve agriculture or forestry activity with incidental residential use. Due to the substandard size of the, of approximately 19,000 square feet, the existing use does not satisfy the intention of zoning. The existing general plan designation of the property is low-density residential, that is, one to five residential units per acre. The property is bound by not Homestead Road on North and quasi-public use PG and property on the west, on the west side. The single-family residences on the east. I'm sorry, it's not moving forward. Okay. The single-family residence to the east and south of the property belong to City of Sunnyvale. There are low, medium, and medium-density residential developments across Homestead Road. The proposed land use of low, medium density of five to 10 units per acre accommodates more intensive form of residential development while still being compatible with single-family residential neighborhood and can be successfully incorporated into existing land uses. The, the proposed project is aligned with city's vision for Homestead Road special area, which is predominantly a mixed-use area with residential uses and series of neighborhood centers. As shown in the diagram, all residential development along Homestead Road are either low, medium density or medium-high density, except for the project site, which is the, which has a designation of low density. This is great opportunity to add more residential density and pedestrian improvements to provide better connection for residents and workers to access services. The next slide demonstrates the existing permitted and proposed building on the property. The existing house is 2,500 square foot with low-density residential development. Without requesting any GPA or general plan amendment, the permitted development is a single-family resident with permitted FAR of 45%, that is approximately 9,000 square foot, which is not beneficial to the community. We studied and evaluated multiple possible uses for the property like commercial, mixed-use, multifamily residential, and realized that those uses are not feasible due to size of the property and compatibility with the, with the neighborhood. The proposed development of low, medium residential density is most appropriate, feasible, and compatible use. The design proposal includes four residences, of which two residences have attached dwelling units or ADUs. The site shows the site plans plus first floor plan for four residential units that are arranged along the central driveway. Each unit has two-car enclosed garage. The living room, dining room, and kitchen on the first floor have open layout. Each unit is surrounded by private landscape spaces on three sides. Operable doors and windows provide ample natural light, beautiful views, and natural ventilation. With the layout, we are able to propose less than 40% site coverage and more than 40% landscape area, thus achieving great balance between landscape and built spaces. The two units on the front of the property have ADU that has one bedroom, living and dining kitchen area. ADUs are valuable form of dwelling units and essential component of housing supply. ADUs provide housing for family members, students, the elderly, in-home healthcare providers, and others at lower prices in the neighborhood. These provide additional rental stock in the city. The second floor plan shows the bedrooms and office spaces for each residential unit. The two units on the rear portion of the property have three bedrooms, while the units on the property front have three bedrooms and potential private offices. The exterior balconies provide beautiful transition space between indoors and outdoors. This slide shows the elevation of two residences from the central driveway and transfer section through the driveway. The proposed development will fulfill height and setback requirements of the City of Cupertino and complements the surrounding buildings. The construction will be primarily of wood frame with sloping roots that are compatible with the context. The project will comply with city's green building ordinances and will be implementing sustainable design principles. The building design includes overhangs, recesses, and other shading elements like low-e glazing, vertical garden wall, wood railers to reduce solar heat gain and energy consumption related to the cooling of the buildings. This slide shows the massing of the building in relation to its context. As you can see, building is compatible in scale and As you can see, building is compatible in scale and mass with the neighborhood. The residential development acts as a buffer between the quasi-industrial use, that is, P G N property, and then single-family residential use. The community benefits proposed to this development area are compatible, comparable, and appropriate to the size of development. Considering a less than half-acre site, onsite public spaces like park, public facilities like library, or transportation facilities are not feasible. The development proposes a land dedication of around three thousand square foot along Homestead Road. This is a prime estate that is dedicated to future easement for pedestrian and vehicular circulation. There is no existing sidewalk along the property. The applicant-
You have about a minute left in your time.
I'm concluding. The applicant proposes to develop a sidewalk landscape street. The applicant is also proposing to pay in lieu fee for school resources. To conclude, we would like to commend our clients for their vision for the development of the property. As you can see in the regional housing allocation table, housing is needed in all income categories, not specifically for low income. The proposed development is an excellent opportunity to promote residential units of diverse size and of diverse income groups on the property without affecting character mass and scale of the surrounding neighborhood. The proposed development shares the City of Cupertino's community vision of maintaining and enhancing the quality of life. This vibrant improvement will revitalize an underutilized property, enhance neighborhood, and provide most desirable housing in the City of Cupertino without causing any negative or net fiscal impact on the country generating revenue. We request your support. Thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Good timing as well. So, are there any questions from council before we bring it over to the public of either of the presentations? Councilmember Moore.
Okay, thank you. I'm curious first about where this, the dedicated area along Homestead Road is, and if, if we could pull, pull up a plan page which could show us that.
Sure, let me just share my screen.
And then the next, so just to get you queued up, I'm also want, I would like to look at page A twelve, the proposed subdivision map.
So, just from, Councilmember Moore, you can see my screen, right?
Yes.
Okay, so if you see, if you just, here's a site plan, so you've seen where the one fifteen is right here. This is the existing property line. It would be actually dedicated in fee, not easement, according to Public Works comments would be in fee rather than easement, so it would be essentially right here. Where the property line would end at the back of the sidewalk.
Okay, and that, and this is not, I, I, refresh my memory, is the sidewalk in correct alignment along Homestead? Or is it having to be relocated in order to fix an alignment issue?
I don't believe there's a sidewalk currently, if I'm mistaken.
Okay, so it's about, it's about matching the sidewalk, so it's in the appropriate location. Okay, so my next question is I see on page A twelve a proposed subdivision of four parcels. And I'm seeing those parcels range in size of from thirty-seven fifty square feet up to four thousand two hundred and ninety square feet. And I'm wondering, this seems to be implying that there is a request to have a, and I'm seeing four parcels here, but the driveway isn't being listed as a parcel, so I'm assuming that this is a, a four parcel subdivision that request that is going along with this general plan amendment. Is that correct?
Correct. It will, and, yes, and, you know, if it's a, if it's a fifth parcel, we would have to, it would be above the density, so we would, we would probably require, no, probably would require it to be more of an easement through the four parcels rather than-
The way it's now-
Yeah, it would be an access easement rather than a separate parcel.
Right, right, because it looks like five parcels there. Okay, and then I wanted to know if, if staff evaluated the potential of SB nine applying to this, because right now what I'm seeing is that there is a request for, for, for parcels, which will most likely have a, a centerline driveway alignment, as you just described. So, it's just four and not this looking like a fifth in the center with a, with an ingress egress easement. So, I was wondering if staff evaluated SB nine in terms of what SB nine would allow currently as it's going through the legislature, is that it would allow a parcel as small as twenty-four hundred square feet to by right be split, and then you can end up with, and this is according to Cal Cities, six units total. So, actually, what you could end up with, if this is signed into law at the end of this year, so parcel one, two, three, and four could each end up having six units on it. So, you could end up with twenty-four total, and, and I was wondering if staff had, had evaluated that potential.
Thank you for that question, Councilmember Moore. I'm not an expert in SB nine, but it's, it's, it's a Senate bill that could affect the whole city in the same way, you know? So, that is, yes, I mean, and as it gets further along the process, and if this, you know, if this application does advance, we would definitely look further into that as to how that, how SB nine would apply or affect this as well. And, and as you know, these, these bills also evolved as time goes on prior to, to adoption as well, too, so, you know, that number could change.
So, what were you, what we're currently looking at as four lots could, with the application of SB nine, be eight lots by right ministerial approval for that division and potentially twenty-four, twenty-four units there? So, you, you could end up with something quite a lot more dense than what we're looking at. And then the next question would be is like, are there any height requirements for that type of density? And, okay, so going back to this number of units, does this, will this count towards our RENA numbers?
Yes, yes, I mean, yes, because you would have, you know, even with the ADUs on top of that as well.
Okay.
Have a net three, well, you have one right now, so if you have six, you'd have net five.
Okay, all right. And, oh, also with regards to noticing, so that was ten days that the sign was up, but postcards were not sent to the people who lived adjacent to the lot. They would only have the opportunity to see the sign, which would have been there for ten days. Is that correct? Okay, so do we have any policy that even if it's border, if we're bordering a different city, like this, this project's bordering Sunnyvale, do we have any policy that we would still have the three hundred foot line? Or, or is this something that we maybe want to consider changing?
The zoning ordinance in terms of when it comes to specific, with actual project applications, we do have those noticing requirements regardless if they're in San Jose or Sunnyvale. Any neighborhoods they would be, if they're within the three hundred foot radius, they would be noticed.
Okay, and, and you mentioned architecture, that it sounds like we can comment on the architecture. Are, are those comments welcome? What, what's the nature of our commentary?
Of course, you can, you can make suggestions.
Okay.
This is your forum to discuss the potential project on the set.
Okay, so that would be when we come back after public comment, that would be the time to talk about the architecture there?
I believe so, yes. I believe that's when-
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. And, and John, your, your audio is a little bit staticky, so if there is an opportunity, you might want to reset your machine, and I'll, I'll just take that opportunity to say that I might actually have to reset my machine at some point as well. So, if I do that, I would ask that the Vice Mayor take over that meeting until I can get back. We have Councilmember Willie with his hand up.
Yeah, so good. Let's keep that picture that's up there now, because that, that I think helps. So, yes, we do need housing. Any, any lots that we can add housing to, that's a plus. But I want to be sure that we are adhering to the city's rules. And so with that, I ask, so it sounds like from the architect's presentation that the lot is nineteen oh ninety-five square feet. And when I look at our Muni code, you know, the lot, the building amount is allowed forty-five percent. Feel free to interrupt me, because more or less I'm asking, are the rules that I'm aware of still in effect across the city? Or are they, have they changed over the years, which I, I know the upstairs, downstairs amounts have changed, things of that nature. So, forty-five percent would mean for that size lot, eighty-two, eighty-five, ninety-two total square feet. And so, again, just interrupt me if I'm wrong. If that, if that's the case, and I look at this, I see, I struggle. The forty-five percent allowed for a total composition where in the architect's statement, it's sixty-two percent. And I really want to be careful here, because people come to Cupertino Planning Department all the time, want to enlarge their house, and they have to adhere to the rule. Now, where does that sixty-two fall within our planning department? I mean, John, you should be the expert. Am I missing something here?
John, I have to stop you there.
Yeah, your audio is really bad.
You're actually now inaudible, unfortunately, so-
Hold on a second. Do you have a mic or a headset?
Was, were you able to hear me okay?
I, I-
Now, we can hear you. Okay, great.
Yeah, no, the problem is John's audio, so-
Well, well, John, you log, log out and log back in.
Cell phone, your cellphone maybe?
So-
For audio.
John, try logging in and out. If, if that doesn't work, you can always log in with your cellphone. So, while, while John is attempting to do that, can you guys hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Okay, I'll take a, I'll take a stab at addressing Councilmember Willie's question. You're not wrong, however, in this particular case, because the zoning, it's zone architecture, as, as the developer, the property owner had, had indicated in her presentation as well, as John's, it has a sort of different, different rules, right? And so, it, it will be part of the plan area, plan residential development, which doesn't technically have lot coverage, so depending on the zoning district designation, it will have a different lot coverage and, and FAR standards. So, in a typical R one district, for example, where you would see single-family homes, that would be correct. You have a forty-five percent FAR with a forty percent, I believe, lot coverage. With something like this particular project, when the project comes in, we'll have to look at sort of that, that zoning, because it technically doesn't have a lot coverage FAR standards.
Well, I would struggle. Two people with two different lots come into the planning department, and one's treated one way and one's treated some, another way. But I'll leave it at that for now. Let me continue on that. Did you look at what the lot coverage, the second story allowable, the setbacks for the adjacent properties in Cupertino, in Sunnyvale? Do you, did you look at that? Do we know what those are?
Um, first, is, am I audible?
You sound better.
I sound better? Good, good, good. No, no, we did not, we did, we did not go, we did not delve in that, that much detail into-
Okay, okay. So, now, in Cupertino, again, okay, so John said, you know, this is going to be different than a residential. But in a residential area right now, the second story, if, if the lot was five thousand square feet, when I look at our Muni code, our Muni code, as I interpret it, it says the, the minimum net lot is allowed down to five thousand, not below. Let's just assume that this is close enough, even though it's below five thousand. Now, when the second story gets considered, the Muni code, you know, our rules for a single-family home require greater setbacks for the second story. And yet, when I look at, when I look at those pictures, there is no difference first floor to second floor. It's straight up, and so I really struggle with how we would be treating this versus everyone else in, in Cupertino that's required to have greater setbacks because of the impact on the neighboring property. And the daylight plain, so that the neighboring properties do get the additional sunlight as it goes up and goes down. If I'm, if I'm missing something here, feel free, but this is what I'm struggling with. Hey, I want housing projects, but I also want to be sure we're fair to the city as a whole, and that five years from now, when somebody comes with the exact same size lot, is the city council at that point going to be applying the rules the same? And so, the setbacks, private, oh, second floor for standard Cupertino residential requires that there's a maximum solid surface. Is it twenty feet, I think? And then it requires a step back?
It's, it's, I, I, well, for, for your R one standards, there's, yes, there is a, you tend to want to have almost like a wedding cake type of setback, right?
But also, the maximum length of any one surface, I think, is twenty feet. It just can't run the full length of the building without steps. And so, I, I really worry that those considerations have not, you know, should have come and said, this is how much it does and how much it doesn't conform, rather than it appearing to us that everything conform. Two, two different people coming to the planning department with their projects need to be treated equally. Well, maybe we'll go ahead and make some allowances. If the lot size is less than five thousand, then they're going to subdivide it. But within that, it's a five thousand square foot lot, and if we go back to the picture that's taken down, on a particular lot, the setbacks from sides and, and front, you know, are defined. And again, if we're not going to treat everybody the same, unless there's something else, I struggle.
Councilmember Willie, I think, I apologize. I didn't mean to cut you off. Go ahead. Sorry.
Okay, and I do think this could be accommodated within the rules with slightly less building mass by stepping back like the rest of the community has to adhere to. A front setback, you know, you're not allowed to have the front of the garage go straight up. It has to be set back. I think it's ten feet, and the sides five feet, and things of that nature. And if you do do those things and then say, okay, now it does meet the requirements, other than if you truly had forced the requirement of a minimum lot size of five thousand, then it would be three houses rather than four, and maybe we, if we're going to bend, okay, but it seems like we're just not adhering to virtually any of the rules. So-
So, let me make an attempt-
At this point, I'll leave, I'll leave that as my question.
Mayor Paul, would this be appropriate for us to respond, or should we wait?
Please, this is questions, and Councilmember Willie has indicated that that was a question, so please.
And, and I'll leave the details to the different zoning, zoning districts and, and the height setback requirements to John for, for that. But every applicant comes into the city, is treated equally. Well, I say two different proposals are treated equally as long as they're in the same zoning. So, zoning district would designate what your requirements are, setbacks, height, those kind of things. So, there's not really universal rule that's applicable to every property within a city of Cupertino, because you have different uses, you have different zoning districts, with different expectations, different, uh, uh, use, different uses, right? So, so that's why the applicability and the requirements are, are different. So, Councilmember Willie, you are correct. If you're talking about R one zoning, those requirements would apply. But this site is actually zoned different. It's not an R one zoning, so the requirement is slightly different, just like you would in R, R two or a mixed-use district. So, that's why you would see some of these projects come in, or have, or be asking different things, or have different base requirements, is because the zoning district is a little bit different. So, John, if anything detailed you want to follow up, feel free.
Yeah, yeah, and, you know, and, and thanks, thanks, Ben. You know, this, this, and going off what Ben said with the R one standards, this wouldn't, this wouldn't be envisioned as an R one development. This would be, again, if there would be a zoning, it would be, I think, Ben, you had talked about a planned development zone, or even we staff had kind of thought about, if, if this were to proceed to a project, it would have to be rezoned to an R one C, which is more of a cluster development. We have plenty examples throughout the city, even near City Hall where there- We have plenty examples throughout the city, even near City Hall, where there are, there are, you know, uh, small detached lots who have three thousand square foot and, and whatnot, with very high F A Rs and very high lot coverages. Um, and where they're, where they're unable to, or limited to how much additions they can do to their homes, or kinda stuck with what they had as the original development. But going with that, you know, uh, Councilmember Willie, this is, this is, this is your opportunity to make those discussions, whether you support an application or not. To say, you know, this is, I would support this application if was adhered more to R one five standards, rather than more of a, of a planned development standard. So this is, this is, this is what, this is what it is, the gateway process, is, is this discussion of, of what you envision for this site and whatnot.
Yeah, Councilmember Willie, if you, if you say, like John said, if you, if you, if you feel strongly that the site should resemble more R one district than you see elsewhere in Cupertino, that's, that's great, we, we love those kind of comments as well. Because like John said, we haven't developed anything yet, this is just asking for permission, if they could submit something, so we can look into and study and develop something. But if you think, if you say that this, this should resemble more R one with those similar setbacks, we'll take those notes and then if this project gets approved and moved forward, we'll, we'll take a look at that and, and make those uh modifications.
And I see a representative from the applicant has her hand raised as well, so did you wanna speak to Councilmember Willie's question, Pratima?
Yes, I would like to uh, uh, explain the design uh a little bit more here. Uh, so when we are changing zone from A one, we don't know which zone we will be choosing. So there are multiple options, you can go for R one, or you can go for planned unit development, which follows the development rules of multifamily residential. And that, those are the rules we have followed, but we have been respectful to the si- single-family residential zone, neighboring zone. So the setback which is required for second floor is already provided for first floor too. So we have additional setback for both floors, taking into consideration the single-family residential uh zone around. And, um, as, as we move along, um, the, uh, all the zoning requirements of a multifamily residential district have been followed for this P U D. And we are not uh requesting any exception or variance in that, we are able to fulfill those requirements.
Okay, great, thank you very much. So we have Vice Mayor Chow next, and Councilmember Moore has her hand raised again. And so we'll go to questions from Vice Mayor Chow.
So first, you mentioned that we don't need a C Q right now, because this is not a project approval. Um, or, or, or even a general plan amendment. So then by the time when we approve this as a amendment to the general plan, do we need any C Q for that?
Yes, eh, eh, Vice Mayor, uh, definitely, uh, similar to the other general plan amendment applications, uh, you'd have to do an initial study, which would include, you know, soil analysis, and maybe the whole gamut, right? Eh, which you have to go back to E R C for their, um, suggestions as to what the next, what is it? Mitigated negative declaration, is a neg deck, or is, or do we need a full E I R? So those are, I mean, so that's.
So, the site is currently zoned agriculture, do you, eh, was there any reason? Was it because, um, it had some other use before that prevented it from being on the other rice? No, not that way. Okay, and then I do have a question about the setback. According to the staff report, the setback, um, is like a zero to, uh, where is that table? Zero to twenty feet in front.
Sure.
Why is it zero to twenty feet? I see it in the map, it's twenty feet.
Um, would you mind if I share my screen really quick?
Please do, yes.
So back to this slide again, um, so what we have over here is, um, do you guys see my cursor on, on the screen?
No, it's not showing.
Sorry. Can't talk, I can't share, let's see, so, um, do you guys see my cursor on the screen now?
Yeah.
So, this, so for example, let's take the, this front lot right here, this would be considered a corner lot, right? So you have homestead, and you have this private drive, we would consider this the front. So you would have this twenty-foot setback for the front, and this would technically be the side. Whereas if you go further in, we would, we would look at this as like a front setback, this would be the side, and this would be the rear. Maybe it's a zoning technicality.
You mean, in terms of which way the house is facing?
Correct, correct, so typically on a corner lot, as, as defined the zoning ordinance, the, the shorter side, street side would be considered the front, regardless of what, whether, if it's the functional side or not, it's, that's, that's how we define it.
Okay. So the standard that's listed in the staff report is our current standard for quarter lot. You mean, what you, by quarter lot, you mean? Um, what do you mean by quarter lot?
Corner.
Quarter, yeah.
Corner, corner lot.
Corner lot, oh, okay, corner lot, okay. So these are the existing standard, or this is just proposed project, it's not our existing standard?
Right, proposed, it's a proposed project, yeah.
It's a proposed project, okay. And then, once we rezone that, say into, uh, five to ten units per acre. Um, with lots so small, um, let me share my screen here.
Yeah, and just for one clarification, uh, where it says that, that, um, that standard, um, in the staff report says allowed, required, existing, that's, that's the, the current standards for A one, A one dash four three, the A one zones. So just for a frame of reference, there is, yeah, right there.
So I know the second uh column is the current zoning, and the third one is the proposed. But it doesn't really comply with any existing zoning right now. And then if we reason it to, uh, five to ten units per acre, to allow four units on this half-acre site. Each lot will be of this, from thirty-seven hundred to forty-three hundred square feet. So much smaller than a standard R one zoning. Therefore, we can apply a standard R one zoning, and then you are saying that it will need a R one C zoning. This is the first time I've heard of this, so is this in our current standard, or is it new and we are going to design?
So R ones, there's no set standard, setback standard for R one C, um, if you go to the R one C ordinance, um, the purpose of it is a cluster, smaller, smaller detached homes in, in a certain area, to give the rest of the site open space, like, uh, maybe just a private park for the residents, and typically it could be a swimming pool, or just, you know, I don't know, like a, like a ten thousand square foot.
We have an ordinance for R one C?
We have a whole chapter for R one C, yes.
We have a whole chapter in the Muni code for R one C?
Yes, we do.
Okay, then assume that this is resented for R one C. Does the proposed project right now, uh, in the third column comply with the current R one C standard?
So R one C is more of a case by case, um, eh, which gives flexibility on a development basis too. So, um, it gives more, I hate to use the word guidelines, but it gives direction in terms of what they wanna see, what's wanting to see on development. There's no set setbacks, um, or whatnot. So if you look at the various R one C developments throughout the city, um, they vary with their setbacks. Some have, some of the R one C homes have, you know, decent-sized usable yards, some have very small yards, or more similar to townhomes.
So, so there are some lots that's zoned R one C, but we don't have really a standard in R one C. And then it's up, is that at the discretion of the city council to always to approve such project?
Uh, right, yes.
Or is, uh, uh, does the community development director have authority to approve a project in R one C?
R one C is, it would have to go, it have to go to council.
City council, that's right.
No, because there is no set standard.
That's correct.
Whereas another way to look at R one C, is it tailorable based on the development proposed?
Right, right.
Yeah, so that's why zero feet from, from setback might be allowed, like in this case. Because it's front towards another house that in the same development, so, and then it's allowed.
Right.
Right, okay, so then the side yard, I'm guessing, if they are all facing side yard, it's within each other. So then, if I'm concerned about the setback from the, their neighbor, other, other property, then I should be looking at the rear setback then. So ra- rear setback would be the setback from existing single-family homes around this lot, right? Down six, eight, like nine feet.
Yes, uh, sided for, I would say the side and rear, correct, the side and rear.
Um, so side and rear, so that will be nine feet. So nine feet is that standard for R one, let's say this side is zoned for R one. What is the standard setback for, we require for R one?
So for, um, for first floor, nine feet could work, you would, so let's, let's just take an R one six. Which is, um, you'd have to have a combined fifteen between both sides, so you can go down as, as, as minimally as five feet to your neighbor on your first floor, um, second floor would be ten feet, that's the minimum.
So first floor could be five feet, second floor could, should be ten feet. And then in this case, it's nine feet about, uh, for both first and second floor. So it's about the same as if this is a R one zoning to, to the, towards the neighbor.
For, for the first floor, I would say it's, it's more consistent, not for the second floor, it's, it's, it's shorter.
Nine, you mean, R one would be about ten, right?
Yeah.
So then, the, almost ten, not as if, if, if this were another side that's zoned R one, second, uh, second floor would be ten feet, right?
Al- although you would see more, more, mo- most people do fifteen, because once you go less than fifteen, you get into like the design review uh, proposals, and that's, that's, the, the threshold for develop, for approval is, is a lot higher.
Oh, so for R one zoning, ten feet, uh, and fifteen feet, that goes through a different review process?
Yes, yeah, you would have like a more, you, um, if you go through R one, if you go, if your two-story permit triggers a design review, you'd have to submit to a consultant architect, and they would review, and, and so it's, it's a little more of a difficult review, so.
Okay.
We don't get as many of those as, let's say, with just a standard, you know, so, most people, for a second-story setback, we'd fifteen feet.
Mostly it's fifteen feet, and then for R one C, does it always go through design review since it's R one C?
Typically, yeah, for, I mean, a- anytime you go through a larger development like, like that, you would have a design review. We would ha- we, we would hire a consultant architect to go through and work with the applicant's architect to refine the, the design of the, uh, of the buildings, correct.
So this, eh, eh, this were, eh, if this side was zoned R one, this will go through the same design review as it were R one?
Yes.
Um, and this will go through that too. And then it mentioned that future development needs either a planned zoning district or R one C. So they could also do a planned zoning district?
They, they could, uh, we even have planned R one C districts as well, um, so R one Cs would I mean, so like, so for example, in this case, there's no common open space, right? Every, every, the only thing that's common right now would be the driveway, um, other than that, everything else is, 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 um, i- i- it's set to a certain person's property, right? R one Cs would have a common open space, where you have maybe a, a little park, or a play structure, or just a seating area, or maybe even a pool. I mean, that's, that's what defines an R one C, different than, let's say, specifically a planned development area. A planned development area would give you the flexibility to not have a common area, whereas an R one C, uh, part of that zoning designation would be, would, would be having a common open space.
Oh, so this, the proposed right now doesn't even qualify for R one C then, because there is no common area?
Correct, correct, so, again, that's, that's a comment that council can make tonight, that, you know, we prefer to have a common area.
Does the driveway count as common area?
No, I don't think you want your kids on a driveway.
They are providing thirteen units, thirteen parking spaces, so I think, oh, like, how many of them? Some of them are shared, so those are not, don't count as common area, the, the common shared parking. Okay, so this lot size is really small, but then they are proposing, my only concern right now is they are proposing a very, very, oh, let me, they are proposing here. So they are proposing this really large house. And residence one, two is up to almost three thousand square feet. Um, and then another is of thirty-two hundred square feet.
Right.
Um, lots that's much, much smaller than, than normal R one. So, they don't have to be that large, right?
Correct, uh, yeah, correct.
But then they do provide thirteen-car parking space, which is nice. Uh, okay, so that's why it's, looks very tight, because they have tried to really maximize the size of the house here, but I guess a lot of houses are, okay, yeah, um, I'll stop here.
Okay, uh, Pratima, I noticed your hand is still raised, did you wanna respond to any questions from Vice Mayor Chow? Or was that just, uh, from your last, uh, hand?
Yes, yes, I would like to respond, uh, just want to clarify, when we, uh, proposed this development, we always had planned unit development. Of course, after reviewing all other options for zoning, we thought planned unit development is more appropriate use for this. Um, there's difficult to justify like four thousand square foot or less property for R one or a single-family resident. Um, and to fulfill those requirements. And about site coverage or, uh, net area proposed, we have less than forty percent of site coverage for this property. So we are, um, still providing, uh, more landscape and open areas, um, for require, as required by planned unit development. And planned unit development requires nine-foot setback on the sides, the question you had from the R one residential district, and we are providing that one, uh, on that side. From P G N E side, we have ten-foot setback, that's an easement and requirement, and front and back, we have twenty-foot setback. Like front is Homestead Road, and rare of the property is twenty-foot setback. Those are all as per required standards and, um, not, not exceeding any, um, of the required, um. So, eh, 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 it will not be a close, single, uh, uh, clustered zoning because of the common area requirement. But considering the size of site, which is less than like approximately half an acre, uh, common area or, um, providing of park or common area is not possible, so we are going for planned unit development.
Okay, so let's go on to Councilmember Wei, you haven't had a chance to ask any questions yet, did you have questions with regard to the presentations at this point?
I don't have questions, but I can make comments after we have our, um, motions.
Uh, yes, very good, um, Councilmember Moore, l- let me afford you an opportunity to ask, uh, some follow-up questions here. I haven't been applying a timer standard here, but I will at this point, since we're going through the second round. So let's try to limit to, uh, two minutes, uh, Councilmember Moore.
Okay, I, I will try, um, okay, so, eh, at issue is that, uh, you know, I just dropped a pin on, uh, on my Google map here, on, on Homestead, and I'm looking at the neighbors, and it appears that they have, uh, you have two single-family residential homes, um, so I, I have to say, I am disappointed at the graphics that we had, which showed the neighboring, um, lot as being, uh, just, just green grass. When in fact, there's, there's a single-family home with what looks like a shedded, um, roof structure, which is attached to the property line fence, and then when I look at the slope of the roof, I'm seeing what looks, um, very much like solar panels. And, um, uh, I'm concerned about that, because these are solar panels on the, the west side of the structure. And, uh, just eyeballing the, the eve height, I'm gonna say the eves m- might be at, uh, somewhere between eight and nine feet, and then it's sloping up from there. So my concern is that I'm looking at what I think is maybe an eight or nine-foot side yard setback. But I don't have a section shown there, um, and that the roof, uh, pitch, uh, the, uh, roof ridge line, I believe, is uh, the uh roof ridge line, I believe, is around twenty-four or twenty-five feet. And you have planned trees in the um side yard area.
Internet still have.
Which can result in a lot of shading, and I'm concerned now that if this, this home, um which we didn't give them a postcard, uh could be um having their solar power affected by the location of this, this uh structure. And then I, and I can't see what's going on for the single-family home uh right behind it. So I would have liked um from the survey to to have um more information uh here, but um could you please verify, am I looking at solar panels here? And uh and a shed structure attached to the, to the fence?
Okay, that's right, about two minutes. Is there a quick um answer to Councilmember Moore's question? Uh, I see one hand raised from Pratima. Did anybody want to uh field that question?
No, I think, I think this is probably more appropriate question for the applicant.
Okay, then Pratima.
Um, I I'm sorry, I forgot to lower my hand earlier, so that's, that's why it is there. But I'm, I I understand there is concern about the uh shading, maybe shading diagram can be provided to explain more how it is going to uh affect the surrounding areas if it is going to. Uh, so more information can be provided on that.
Okay, well, let's go on to our public here. Go ahead and lower this hand. Um, so the attendees with their hands raised are Jennifer Griffin and Jean Bedord. And I'll remind everyone that uh at the end of Jennifer's comment, as the first uh com- public commenter, I'll be closing off the hands raised for public comment. So now we have Jennifer Griffin, Jean Bedord, as well as Stephen Scharf. Welcome, Jennifer. You'll have up to three minutes.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Darcy. Can you all hear me?
We can hear you.
Uh, yes, thank you. I had sent an email to City Council this morning concerning the two ADUs on the property. I think it, uh, my question was whether they were providing onsite parking for the ADUs in the house entity that the ADU is comprised in. Um, there have been problems in Portland, Oregon, where my brother lives, um, that there are four ADUs that were built on his street nineteen-twenty neighborhood. They have flooded the street parking. Um, people are, families are complaining about it. Um, it, this has also been a problem in Santa Cruz County where my mother lives. Um, I, I know that they're not required to have onsite parking for ADUs, but I really, really hope that this complex will understand that ADUs are new. And we don't wanna set a precedent here for Cupertino, because we like our parking in Cupertino. I like the parking in Cupertino. Now, it looks like there's adequate parking, which I'm very pleased to see. Um, another thing is, I, I understand if you guys are going for plan development, because these homes have no second-story setback, zero. So I think that if you wanna do plan development, that's great, but if you're seeking an R one, they have no second-story setback. Um, I think the construction, I understand if it's efficient, but to me, it's a little stark and blocky. And I don't, I'm familiar with that area, and I really don't think that these are compatible with the single-family homes in the area. I'm sorry, but they look like four apartment complexes. Now, I, I understand we have to be sensitive to this, et cetera, and I respect architecture, et cetera. But I am worried about the precedent of SB nine. I'm very familiar with this bill. I do not want Cupertino to become a precedent for SB nine. There has also, in the city of Sunnyvale, some groups are trying to get Sunnyvale to eliminate single-family housing. This has come up in their planning commission in the last month. So we could wind up with a situation where this property is surrounded by Sunnyvale, and we could have all sorts of eight plexes of SB nine passes, we could have eight plexes per lot. I think this project is a good project. We need to reimagine it. I'm a bit concerned at how large some of the housing complex is. Why don't we get rid of the two ADU units and make a nice, large family home for large families with children, um, or else make it so that the
Fifteen seconds.
These can be interchangeable, so that you could use the house in total. Uh, I'm not really pleased with this project. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jean Bedord. Welcome.
Thank you. It is now ten twenty-five, and we are just now getting into the meat of this meeting. My name is Jean Bedord, and I am here to encourage you to authorize this GPA authorization. This is exactly the type of infill project that Cupertino needs. Frankly, I'm appalled at the sheer bureaucracy and the cost involved in moving forward with what should be a relatively straightforward project. Why create so many barriers to building housing in Cupertino? Please, please, move ahead as soon as possible. Remember, this is only the first step. The project has to be then submitted to the planning commission as well as city council. Don't get ahead of yourselves. Just get the zoning changed. And agricultural doesn't make sense at this, during, at this point. It may have fifty years ago, when this is, but it doesn't make any sense now. We need multifamily housing. It sounds like a plan development fits the bill here. It's not a particularly big lot, and so there are a lot of limitations, but we need housing. Please, don't stand in the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Our next speaker is Stephen Scharf. Welcome, Steve.
Hey. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Oh, thank you. Uh, okay, thank you, Mayor and City Council. Councilmembers Moore, Chow, and Willie brought up many of my concerns. Uh, you know, under current state law, every one of the residential units could have a detached ADU added later. So even without SB nine, you could have up to eight buildings with a total of twelve units on this site with no extra parking required for the ADUs. And the city would have no power to prevent the detached ADUs from being built. Uh, and because it's not R one, the lot coverage requirements would not apply. But on the other hand, this lot is certainly of sufficient size to accommodate uh at least nine units and six buildings with a three-way lot split. Um, if there were no ADU law, the R one C would be appropriate, and four lots could be accommodated with no problem. Except it could not be R one C, because there are no common areas. Um, but I think the thousand-pound gorilla in the room for this GPA is what's happening in Sacramento right now with SB nine, as Councilmember Moore mentioned. Um, if, if this was split into four lots, then by right, it could be again split into eight lots, and each of those eight lots could have a single-family home, an attached ADU, and a detached ADU, so that now you're up to twenty-four units on there. Um, and again, it's by right. Uh, the other issues I see is, um there's no community benefits, there's no requirement for affordable housing. And what we really need in Cupertino is affordable housing. Um, you know, market rate housing, you probably have, you know, enough, but for sale and and rental, affordable housing, that's what we have a huge shortage of. And I should have said at the beginning, I'm speaking for myself, not um in any other official position. Um, so I, you know, this is up to the council, I would have issues with this um until we know what's gonna happen in Sacramento at the end of this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Our next and final speaker is Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, Mayor, uh Mayor Paul and council members and staff. Um, before I go on to my slide, um, I second Councilmember Willie's concerns on the far and minimum parcel size, second-floor setback. And I also second Councilmember Moore's concern about notification. I don't care what city you live in. We should have notified the people behind them. It should be standard, and it shouldn't have to wait until they're actually have the project completed. We should have done it with the GPA. So that should be a policy change. Um, and my concern about the impact on the neighbors' solar panels. That's a huge shadow that can take away all their uh production. Then getting to my points, uh my request is to require affordable housing in order to upzone the property. If the property is sold before building, then make the approval void. Um, upsoding is an immediate increase in the value without affordable housing. Um, the ADUs, I always think of an ADU as a lower-income housing unit. But in the feasibility description, it described it as for visitors or used as an office. Well, that doesn't, that doesn't fill our need. Um, three trashcans per home, there's six homes here, so you're talking eighteen trashcans. And I don't see where they're gonna be stored. And we have a problem with um the steakhouse at Main Street. They weren't supposed to have their trashcans visible on Stevens Creek, and they always are. Um, parking, there is no overflow parking on Homestead or Blaney. I tried to go shopping in that center when they were busy and couldn't get my shoes, because there was absolutely no place to park. Um, gardener services, they have yards, they're gonna have gardener services. Where are their trucks gonna park? And where are AT&T or the plumber gonna come? Anyway, those are my concerns. Um, I would require affordable housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. We'll bring it back up to council at this point. And before we uh conduct any further deliberation, I will entertain a motion. Is a motion forthcoming from our council?
Okay, I'll make a motion so we can make discussions. How's that? I move adoption of resolution number twenty-two dash zero three zero, approving request for general plan amendment and that the proposed application is exempt from CEQA.
Would anyone like to second? Okay. Um, okay, I I I will start off our um our commentary on the motion on the table. I I think that the recommended action is um not written appropriately. Uh, it states that we approve a request for a general plan amendment. At the very least, we need to modify that to state that though we're approving a request for uh a- a- approving uh the request for, not, not the general plan amendment, but to submit an application for a general plan amendment. Um, so I I think we should be rewording this to state that it's approving the request for uh an application for a general plan amendment. Um, so if the movement would accept that friendly amendment
Sure.
to reflect that this is a gatekeeping process, and if the seconder would accept that as a second as well.
I- is the resolution number twenty-one zero three zero states that in the resolution?
Uh, i- i- it does, but the recommended action, I I don't think was, was accurately written to reflect that this is not um approving uh approving a general plan amendment, uh but rather approving, approving the request to um to submit a general plan amendment.
So I'll restate the motion. I move adoption of resolution number twenty-one dash three zero three zero, approving the some request for submission of the general plan amendment, is that? And that the proposed application is exempt from CEQA.
Okay, uh uh excellent. So that is my understanding of what my friendly amendment entailed. And um thank you for restating the motion. Um, so um the, a- and the seconder just to verify that was your understanding.
I verified that the out, the resolution does say it's just authorize the amendment procedure to to proceed with general plan amendment application.
Right. I just wanna make sure that the language of the motion is reflective of the fact that this is a um a gatekeeping process. So, um, o- okay, so we do have a few hands up here. However, uh we're in a deliberative process here, so I will call on council um to begin the deliberation. Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand up?
Yeah. Okay, um, first, I, there was a concern about whether SB nine applies here. I looked up the language for SB nine. Here is the, you can see that here is the proposed text. It applies to a single-family residential zone. Basically, it applies only to R one-zoned lot. And as we just learned, this side after resolved will not be R one-zoned. Therefore, SB nine does not apply. It will be a planned development, which has uh is, it's like many other multifamily and residential development. So I think that concern is not there. Um, I would like to know also, I couldn't find out how many bedrooms are in each residences.
Okay, would the, would the applicant like to answer that question?
Yeah.
For ADU, one bedroom, for uh two units on the rear, three bedrooms. And front units have four bedrooms.
So for example, the residence one, two, these are four bedrooms?
No, so residence one and two, the parcel first and second, they have three bedrooms on the second floor.
Three bedrooms, and the residence three, four have uh
Four bedrooms.
Four bedrooms.
Yeah, I mean, the
So one, two is, one, two is, uh, so one, two is here on the left.
Very.
Three, four is on the right.
Right.
So my only concern is this, I wonder whether, because these two, these are very small lots, and then you are pretty ambitious in building over three thousand square feet. And to be honest, Cupertino has a lot of this kind of house, so we do need a middle-income housing that's smaller. So I wonder, is it possible that we provide, at least on the east uh east side, where it's neighbor the routine, the existing single-family home? Is it possible to have, provide fifteen-feet second-floor uh setback? And then reduce the size of the residences, then? Then I think that will be a better project. I do want to see this project move forward. I think um this is a move in the right direction. But I do wonder, why do we need such big home in small lots? So it's not possible to reduce the size.
I, I understand your concern of in Cupertino, but move, like, given situations, uh there is also requirement of uh in-house office spaces. We experienced that in last one and a half uh year, that is requirement two. And the families of school-going kids do need separate bedrooms, so three-bedroom is a um good size, and there is requirement of that size units also in city of Cupertino. But we'll definitely consider your request and see if we can provide more setback from single-family. And as we are saying, we, the property is a bit in single-family, but it's only on two sides. We are still um not under, uh, taking into consideration the PG and E on one side. So actually, this development is acting as a buffer and transition between industrial zone and single-family zone. So we cannot convert it directly to the single-family zone, because we have to be considerate to the users of this property also, which have one side as industrial zone.
So does the square footage here include the ADU? The two, the size of the ADU or not?
No, ADU is separate, six hundred and seventy square feet each.
So for residence three and four here, that's thirty-two hundred square feet already. There will be a six hundred forty square feet on top of thirty-two hundred.
Yes.
On a lot that's like four thousand square On a lot that's like four thousand square foot. So you could easily have three bedrooms each and two bedrooms, right? Or three bedrooms, three bedroom. And then provide fifteen feet setback, right?
On the front, we can, the second parcel, it will be difficult, yeah.
So I think what we need is for the second and fourth parcel facing east side of the property to provide fifteen feet setback.
On second floor, you mean?
Second floor, yes.
PUD actually has requirement of nine feet. We'll, we'll try, if not fifteen feet, if we can come in between PUD and single family, we'll try to do that.
Okay, so then here is a question to staff. As part of the GPA authorization, can we require that we approve this this request, but we require, say, fifteen feet? Not fifteen, let's say twelve feet setback on the second floor? Is it possible to approve the amendment like this?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Next, we have Councilmember Wei.
Okay, here's a couple of comments. And I was looking at the map that Vice Mayor Chow is looking at. The square footage actually includes two-car garage. The actual living space is smaller than it is. So when I look at this project, this is a gateway project, right? Gateway program. It really, it, it bodes well because it is, it doesn't go to the neighborhood. It has family where you can have kids and also has ADU, which could provide as low income rental properties. So it's a good combination of what we can have. And it's really situated in a very unique place. I go by it. It's not in any really neighborhood because it goes into Homestead. And the other side is PG&E. It is in the single family area, but it's not in the single family because it doesn't go through the neighborhood. And there's enough parking for the ADU because there are five extra parking spaces in addition to a two-car garage in each housing. So this really fits what we need. It's, there are four homes good for families and then two ADUs that could, you know, suit as, could fit as a, you know, affordable housing. So I, I, I like this project. And whatever details, they'll have to comply to all the zonings and all the setback lines. So I, I feel that we could, I would, I let this go through the gateway program and all the details would be, you know, would be worked out. And I, I just think that this, in a concept wise, it really is a very good project that fits into what Cupertino needs. Bring kids, but also provide some, you know, affordable housing. So that, that's my comment. And I'm not, I'm, I'm saying that they are gonna confirm, confirm with all the zoning requirements setback lines. So I don't think they're asking anything else to be extra. If you drive by, this is a very unique location that really is. So I was looking at a veranda, right? If this were, were a affordable housing project, we probably could build eighteen units or twenty units of affordable housing. But this is a single family home that they're looking at for private properties. They are doing their best to provide family and also sort of a low-income housing.
Okay, so any other comments, Councilmember Moore?
I, I really appreciate Vice Mayor's suggestion of having this setback on the second floor. And I'm very concerned about the, the lack of information that we have about the, the height and that we don't have a, of the, of the solar panels on the neighbors, that we don't have a, an elevation showing the neighbors. And just an overall concern that when we were presented with our postcards and the graphics, that the neighbors were not shown at all. And they, the neighbors were not shown on, on the survey, that the distance to the neighbor's house wasn't shared to us. And we're, we're trying to take a stab in the dark for whether or not the, the fifteen-foot second floor setback would be, would, would it work? We don't have any shadow studies. We, we don't know anything about that. So I'm concerned there. So, and I would like to ask, John, is, is this the zoning, could, could you repeat what the zoning is for this?
Currently, it's A one four three.
And it's going to propose to be?
It could be a planned development or R one C. Although, a, as it's currently designed, we would think it would, it would fit more as a planned development because that gives a lot more flexibility.
Okay.
More, if, if I may apologize, if I may. The evaluation of the appropriateness of the project and what zoning it, it will most fit into will be determined once the application is submitted. I wanna avoid sort of designing the project here and identifying a zoning now. Although, if, if the council does feel like a particular zoning district is more appropriate, we'd love to hear that comment because then we can apply onto our plan review comments to the applicant to try to figure out what's the best zoning for the project.
Okay, and the reason I'm concerned is when I look at R one C out of the municipal code, it says a residential, single-family cluster zone is a land use designation for single-family residential use upon a parcel, et cetera. So there, there's my concern, going back to the SB nine concern and what we could ultimately end up with. Now, with regards to height, they're showing a ridge height on one of the plans. Twenty-four, twenty-five feet, something like that. Now, when we're looking at, I'm gonna assume these are tentative plans. When we're looking at those, and it shows you have a ridge height peak, but the, but the eaves are much lower and it has kind of an interesting configuration. Can it then come back to your planning department where there's an expectation where the ridge height is twenty, twenty-four, twenty-five feet, but actually that's moved over to the, the side of the building, side of the structure, now causing even more shading onto the neighbors? Can, can that happen?
Yes, this it can, but, which is why we're seeking comments if, if the council, individual councilmembers even, have concerns about height or wanna keep the height at a certain level, whether it's the ridge or eve. Those are comments for us to, to take in so we can evaluate the project against those comments.
Okay, so with regards to, to the architecture, could we please see the, the, the front elevation from, it would be the north side? The view from Homestead?
I have a couple of views. I have the 3D view, which I think it's probably
Yes, yeah.
Let me just pull it up. Sorry about that.
And just to, when they, when they get to the pervious surfaces, I'm, I'm, I'm curious if we can, I should say impervious surfaces, are we requiring that they provide something like cobbles or, or something that's gonna have some, some groundwater recharge potential? Or, or are they allowed to put a complete concrete on all those patio areas? So, yeah, so when we're looking at this, I, I, I wish there was a little more visual interest on the, the front end of each of those buildings. Some, you know, a step out of a foot or something, just so that there was a little bit something more to, to, to look at. Because they're pretty, they're pretty simple facades there. So that, that is my request, that there's some detailing added in there, be it a little jog out, you know, for, for ten feet on the building or something of that nature. And I don't know if, if the planning department has some comment of what, what could be done to
That, that is great comment. Councilmember Moore, we'll, we'll take that in. I hear you, you want to see some more three dimensionality, some better finstration, maybe change your plane, some facade. We hear you. We, we haven't had a chance to review the project, obviously, so we don't have any comments at this moment.
And then also with the, the tree selection with regards to consideration for the neighbors. You know, I'm, I am really concerned about that, that we didn't provide the postcard. They might not have known what we, what the plan set even, even looks like to know that they, they need to be present here and comment or, or just wanna hear about it. And, you know, if it were me and I had the solar panels and, and a large, large two-story project coming in next door, I would be, I would be really concerned about that and wanting to, to have that, that issue taken care of. So I, going back to my first comment, I really appreciate the Vice Mayor suggesting we do have a fifteen-foot second story setback there. But I don't know, without having an actual elevation there, whether or not that would be adequate? And is, and is the neighbor in agreement with that type of arrangement? Those are things I know about.
I, I will just respond and say, we, we know that, we know that comment as well, and we'll take a look at that. It's, it's, it's our, it's our job, our goal is to kind of protect the community, whether you're entirely in Cupertino or you butt up to Cupertino, we'll look at everything, so.
I, if I could add one thing too, I know that I sent the applicant labels for three hundred-foot radius for them to send out a notice to the, as, as a courtesy, as a developer and the applicant to, as a community outreach effort. And I, I think, I believe they had done that because I did see some people from Sunnyvale outside City Hall tonight, holding a flyer. So they weren't notified by the developer. And, you know, one of the things we would encourage, strongly encourage, even recommend is to have them do a community outreach effort on their own to present the project.
Right, right, because as we know, we've, we've heard a lot of comments about the Apple headquarters campus because we're bordering different jurisdictions there. Okay, thank you.
Right, thank you, Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Willie.
Leave the picture up on the screen that's there. I think it, it helps in several different things. You know, notice the, the so-called shading that you're seeing there that would be over the top of, you know, conceivably, the neighboring houses if they do in fact have a solar panel. But still, leave, leave that there because the front view, I think, is also important. So what, what I would tend to be saying is, you know, I, I would be, I would be advocating for letting it move to the next step with requirements, or I should say, I would prefer, I think they get a thirty-day time period to come back with minor changes. And so I'd like to see it come back in thirty days with the clarifications. And then at that point in time, providing that they met those requirements, then they could conceivably move to the next step. Now, what would my requirements be? And so if John can tell me, right now, if a person with a single-family house decides to put a second story on it, how many houses on each side and across the street and behind does he have to give the preliminary design set to? Has it been changed in the last ten years?
The, the ordinance doesn't require neighbor outreach for the applicant.
Well, is that R one C or is that R one?
That's, that's R one.
Okay, because ten years ago, twenty years ago, they required, you know, the planning department required twenty sets of drawings that, my memory says, three on the left, three on the right, six across the street, and six behind. Now, did all that go away?
I, you know, I, I don't recall. I, I was here twenty years ago, but I don't recall that being, I don't know if we do have some staff members here from twenty years, fifteen years ago that might wanna clarify that. I don't think that was ever the case.
Because I wanna be fair to the residents. Even though they're Sunnyvale, if, if somebody over in Rancho puts a second story on and has to follow this process, I wanna be sure that we're being fair. And these, these houses, the three houses, if it is three, and then if it's a shopping center across the street, it's a non-issue. But then the houses behind it get notified and that they're notified when it will be coming back in thirty days so that they could also come and let us know that they have any concerns or they say that it really meets. So then my last question would be for the city attorney. If we then do designate it as R one C, the, the resident Steve said that conceivably the SB nine is then going to allow this to totally change. Does R one C prevent that? Can the city attorney?
Yeah, so first of all, SB nine is just a proposed bill, not a passed bill. So we don't know what it would finally look like. I am not familiar with that bill, but the, just the general language I saw on the front, I think there is a risk it could apply to this project under the R one C zoning. But, but again, I would have to do a little more of an assessment. But it looked like this could still be considered a single-family zone considered that the, that there's gonna be one home allowed on each parcel. That it's not actually an apartment building. So, but, so that's my preliminary assessment, is that it might apply.
Okay, so then my last comment, again, I'm glad this picture's still up here. For the surface that abuts the adjacent houses, my, my criteria would be that it needs to conform to what our R one says. And so if our one says twelve feet or if the R one says fifteen feet, I think it should, should have to comply, just like the other one on that side. And on the commercial side, if they actually wanted to do something a little bit less, I think they said there's a nine-foot setback on that side. And so if they were gonna do something there, it'd be less of, of an impact. But the, the sides that abut single-family homes, I think those homeowners deserve the same consideration that all the other community members have to adhere to. And a fence that says Sunnyvale and Cupertino, I, I have a real tough one saying that it doesn't have to comply. So, so with those, I would say, okay, yeah, it might be just a little bit smaller than what they proposed or two of the houses would be a little bit smaller than what they proposed. I think for the most part, they can probably be saying, hey, they, they've got a good project. So I'll leave that with my comments, thank you.
Okay, so I've, I've heard some potential adjustments. Did, did anyone want to make a friendly amendment to the motion on the table or propose a substitute motion with regard to some of the comments that have been made, particularly by, by Councilmembers Moore and Willie?
I'm happy to make it with respect to, to my comments and, and so friendly amendment. And then tell me which ones we can or can't. And thirty days for them to then come back with the clarifications and things. And notifying the neighbors, as is required in Cupertino, whatever that requirement is, that on the adjacent house size, side, it needs to comply with our R one zoning requirements. And I'm, I think I'm good with that. So those would be my criteria, yeah.
Okay, and let, let me go back to the, the motioner. Would you be willing to accept those as friendly amendments, Vice Mayor Chow, to your motion? Those, those additional requirements by Councilmember Willie? Before I get on to Councilmember Moore's requirements.
I think how we
Oh, yes, very good, thank you. Councilmember Wei, would you accept those as friendly amendments to your motion?
I just wanted to listen to staff, is it, are those viable? I mean, this is the gateway, they don't even have a project or zoning change. So are all those applicable right now?
We, we don't know, we have not evaluated the project.
So we don't yet, we don't have it.
Yeah, I actually, I don't agree with the amendment either.
Okay, well, as a secondor, then that wouldn't be accepted as a friendly amendment regardless. So let me go back to Councilmember Moore. You had the initial comments with regard to potential modifications. Did you want to propose a substitute motion based upon what you've heard from Councilmember Willie as well?
Well, I'm, I'm not sure how to construct it. You know, I'm, right now, at the moment, I'm, I'm looking at the, the existing survey. And on, on the east side of the property, they're going to be going from and on, on the east side of the property, they're going to be going from an empty driveway, so there's no structure there right adjacent to the property on the east, which has the, the solar panels on the roof, single-story, low-slope roof. They're going to go from having an, pretty much an open area to their west, to now having a structure which goes, I believe, 20 to 24, 25 feet high. So I, I'm concerned about not having the information here that we need in order to suggest what would be a, an appropriate setback on the second story to not have a negative impact to the neighbor. Because I, I, I think they could come back and, 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 you know, certainly complain to the city if this, this plan comes, comes back to city council and they're, and they're now having their electricity supply essentially lessened because we are casting them in shadow. So I don't, I don't know how to, how to work with this, with this problem and create, create some sort of an amendment that, that'll, that'll.
That's fair, that's fair. So let me ask staff, I, I know built-in into our gateway process is the ability to amend and come back, and I believe it was within 30 days. Could, could staff speak to that possibility and how we might utilize that in this situation based upon the feedback that we've heard from the council?
I, I think getting all of the feedback that's given to be turned around 30 days might be pretty difficult to do, particularly because this might require, I mean, the applicant might be better to, to, to explain this, but it might require a complete site redesign, which, which would be difficult to do in 30 days. I mean, maybe something conceptually with the setbacks, you, you might be able to do, I would assume, but having, I mean, having us to have an architectural consultant look at it or to have the, like, a lot of the facade changes to be done and, you know, really fine-tune, I, I'd be hard pressed to say that it could be done in 30 days.
Okay. And, and is your understanding of the process that it would be a 30-day turnaround? Am I remembering that time period correctly? It was 30 days and not something like three months, right?
It was, 30 days was what the ordinance says.
Right, and, and I thought it was for relatively minor changes to come back.
Right.
So did the applicant have anything to say to that point? Based upon what you've heard as feedback, do you think you could turn it around for the feedback you've heard from council to resubmit the request to apply for a general plan amendment within that period of time?
Yes, possible. I just want to clarify one thing, though. We have mailed to all the residents the list we received. We have mailed them within time limit. I don't know why we have this idea that the, the, the residents were not notified. We have sent mails to all residents, so they have been notified. And we will be able to submit the discussions we made, like change the setback from the residence, a single-family residential site, and the shadow study or elevation for the resident at that side. We can submit that within 30 days' time.
Okay.
So, Mayor, can I, can I ask some questions then I have proposed the amendment?
Oh, please do. You're, well, very well, you're, you're up next, followed by Councilmember Wei.
Okay, so just to clarify some question, what's the school district for this site? Someone asked me.
Cupertino.
Cupertino, right? Okay. And so where the trash cans will be placed?
That's, so we, we, we would route this to Recology in our, in our environmental services department to work with the applicant in terms of trash can placement. You wouldn't have trash can, you wouldn't have trash pickup in, like, actual trucks going to the sites because it's not deep enough. So preliminarily, what would, the feedback we've gotten from Recology is just be on the street.
That would be part of project evaluation when the project comes in.
Yeah, okay. So I think we are, as we understand, the R1C doesn't apply here, so we do need to rezone this to P zoning. And that P zoning means that we don't have a lot of standard. So as part of the general plan amendment for this site, we can specify certain standards together with the amendment, right?
Yeah.
And then there are actually not a lot of existing standards to apply, so I, I hope when it comes back to the council for the actual amendment, we will see more detailed standard that will apply to this particular P zone, because I understand every P zone could have different standard, okay? And for example, the buffering method, the screening method, and landscaping requirement, I think we can only include all of those as part of the general plan amendment when it comes back. And, but then right now, we are not approving the project. I don't think we even need to see the site plan for, 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 for a wider setback to approve for this gateway process to go forward, because we are not approving the project here. So my proposal, I'd like to propose an amendment that we approve this authorization for the general plan amendment to proceed with the, when it comes back, I'd like to see a requirement of 12 feet setback on the second floor and nine feet on the first floor for the east border. And we would require a shadow study for that side. And I'm not sure if we need a modification for notification, but the staff can figure it out when it comes back.
Okay, Councilmember Wei, will you accept that as an amendment to your motion?
Actually, I was just going to say that that's a very good amendment because we're approving just a gateway project. The, the project itself, I'm pretty sure, because we already, we, council expressed a lot of our concerns, so I'm pretty sure the applicant will work with the staff to address all the concerns. So yes, I will do that. If the staff says it's not going to impede on any project.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm sure that when we approve the project, we would figure out where the trash cans will be placed at, at that time.
And this has to go to the commission and all, all the recology, everything, so we're not approving project. And I like Vice Mayor Chow's guidelines, so, but I do want the staff to pitch in that that's an okay amendment.
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay, so. And include the buffering or screening method and landscaping in, in, when, when it comes back.
Okay, is that, is that agreeable to you, Councilmember Wei?
Sure, I just want to clarify that, so the mailing is not a part of it, right?
I said the staff will figure out what's reasonable, because I don't know. That will be part of.
Yeah, but it has not been ended like that.
The actual amendment, we will see, right? At that time, when staff will propose something, then we can decide.
Okay, Vice Mayor Chow, I'm assuming that you will accept that as a second, seeing as to how it was your own amendment. Okay, I'll go on to Councilmember Moore, followed by Councilmember Willie.
I only personally feel that the, the setback needs to be on parcel four, the second floor setback. Because, you know, barring data about parcel two, it doesn't appear that there's the same situation going on at the southeast corner of that property. And while I appreciate the 12-foot setback, since we are going to have the, the shadow study, I think that'll provide some more information for us visually and, and I think that our, the message has been well-received about taking care of that neighbor to the east. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Willie?
Yeah, just a quick question, something that just jumped into my head. For these higher-density projects, so if we're going to go ahead and say that this is going to be a, a P and it's got the four houses plus the 280 use, wouldn't, it seems to me, it would sure make sense that since this is going to be much more close proximity to all the different homeowners, to have an HOA, so that everybody has to adhere to the same rules, noise, you know, thing, you know, car, broken-down cars, things like that, that when you have regular-sized lots, everybody's pretty much able to, to be free of their neighbors. And so, you know, to the applicant, wouldn't it, or maybe, maybe to the city staff, wouldn't an HOA help to prevent potential problems in the long run? Good question.
Yes, we, we would, I mean, that's a standard boilerplate condition of approval, the creation of an HOA with CCNRs. That's, that's peer-reviewed by our, our city attorney's office as well. For, anytime, anytime you have like a shared access or that, you know, people have to pay for together, you would have that.
Excellent. That makes a lot of my concern go away. I mean, the, the adjacent houses is still there, but at least the close proximity and stuff. I mean, in the future, if you bring that as part of the original discussion, staff report, I mean, I think it would, would really help understand and, and get comfortable with this. So thank you.
Okay, great. Well, seeing as I haven't made comments here, I'll, I'll go ahead and make that, and hopefully we can close out to, to vote on the motion on the table after that. I, I'm looking at the staff report and it looks like the impact fee for affordable housing would be approximately $169,000. I, I would like to see, I mean, I, you know, I looked it up while we were talking, you know, this property sold approximately 10 months ago for $2.64 million. I think if we're going to end up putting, you know, essentially four very large homes on there by square footage, you know, the, the, the margin that we're providing to the applicant is quite, quite, quite high. And if the impact fee ends up being $169,000, you really can't provide for any type of affordable housing unit. And given the fact that there is a general plan amendment authorization that's needed here, I, I would ask our staff to look into the possibility of increasing that. And I don't want to pull an arbitrary number out of the air, but, you know, I'll, I'll just remind everyone that this is a gatekeeping process, and if a general plan amendment is being asked for, then we, we should really be doing some examination as to the economic value of what we're being asked to grant and take it vis-à-vis the amount being considered for the, for the, for the BMR housing fund. So I'll leave it at that. I do see Councilmember Moore with your hand up. Is that artifactual or did you want to have some additional commentary at this point?
Well, it, it's in relation to what you just said, Mayor Paul, and do we have the ability to deed restrict, require a deed restriction on the, on the ADUs for that project or not? Is that something that we can do in this, at this stage? Require that one or both of the ADUs be restricted to income levels that are either low or very low income? Are we, is that something?
That, that sounds like more of a question for our, our legal counsel, but, you know, for, for my part, I don't see why we wouldn't be able to require that as, as a condition of, of some of the community, so-called community benefits as applicable to granting a general plan amendment ultimately. But Madam City Attorney, did you want to speak to that point?
I think my recommendation would be at that point then to have the applicant come back with a revised project application that might offer additional community benefits for council to consider and to have councils not approve or suggest that they come back in 30 days with additional community benefits offered for council to consider. And then council could consider those at that time.
I see what you're saying. So you're actually recommending that the 30-day period be invoked in this kind of situation?
If, if you feel that this application is not proposing sufficient community benefits, I would give the applicant an opportunity to consider what additional community benefits they would like to propose and return to you with those.
Okay, so you wouldn't actually recommend that we approve the motion on the table if that were a consideration, even though the general plan amendment wouldn't be considered for authorization here tonight? You would say that we should probably make it clear on the table is consideration of a certain amount of benefits, taking into account the feedback that they've received with regard to that. I, is that?
That, that would be your recommendation, that we give the applicant an opportunity to consider additional community benefits to come back with a proposal.
Okay, well, then I'll make a substitute motion to that effect, encapsulating what we have discussed and asking that the, that the applicant come back within 30 days to, you know, incorporate whatever they can glean of, out of our discussion into a revised proposal. And, and I'll note as well that what was motivating this was an examination of the BMR housing impact. Can I have a second for that motion?
Second it.
Okay. I see Councilmember Wei with her hand up. Councilmember Wei.
Right, can, so I want to clarify, so does that void the first, this is the substitute motion?
Yes, it's a substitute motion, but I, I'm inviting the applicant to take into account the, the comments that have been made up to this point, if, if they so wish, to make use of that time to address some of those comments as well. They are certainly free to, to do so.
Okay, because I, I don't think we can legally ask them to say you have to rent it, because they might buy it to rent to their parents or it could be, so the ADU is not separate from the single-family home, so it'd be hard for us to say you have to rent the ADU out to low-income housing. So I guess what we can do is, like you said, Mayor Paul, just, just deny it and ask them to come back with 30 days with community benefit.
No, my motion is to come back in 30 days and, and take a look at the comments we've made and with a particular emphasis on the BMR aspect of this. And, and yes, within the, the parlance of the, of the structure of, of what we've set forth here as a gatekeeping process, yes, it would be the community benefit relating to the BMR housing impact. So that's, that's the motion on the table. I, I'm opening the door as an invitation to utilize these 30 days to, also try to pay heed to what else has been discussed during council's deliberation on this item tonight. Vice Mayor Chow, you have your hand raised.
Yeah, so you are suggesting to the applicant to come back to offer more in terms of affordable housing, because you think they got a really good deal when they purchased this property for $2.4 million, which is really a good deal.
I think they're going to get a good deal if they're able to put, you, you know.
And if we upzone.
1,000 square foot housing.
So if we upzone to allow four units, there, there is going to be quite a big of profit that will be made as a result of us upzoning. Therefore, you are asking that the applicant to offer more benefits in order to get the upzoning, so that you hope that the benefits might come. I don't think the deed restricted ADU makes sense, but then likely the applicant could offer more affordable housing mitigation fee. That may, let's say it may be $500,000, so that it's equivalent to one unit of affordable house, of BMR unit, right? So that might be.
If the applicant's asking for four units of housing, then, you know, there, it's also within their right to offer up one of those units in, in our BMR program. I, I mean, I, I would look forward to seeing what could be placed on the table.
It could be one ADU that's deed restricted as BMR unit or possibly providing cash to... or possibly providing cash to, um, to, so that the city will be able to, uh, build another unit elsewhere, maybe for, I think right now it's 600 or 700,000 per unit.
I, I think the applicant has enough. I think the applicant has adequate feedback from council to come back with something in 30 days.
Okay, excellent. Uh, Councilmember Way, your hand is raised as well, perhaps?
I'm, I'm, I'm good. I just want to know, uh, can you repeat the, uh, motion?
Of the motion? Certainly, I, I, I'm invoking, uh, the 30-day, um, allowance to come back, uh, uh, to us with some, uh, relatively minor modifications. Uh, I'm asking that the applicant take into account the feedback that's been provided from council tonight with a particular emphasis on the BMR component, uh, of this application. I note that, um, the impact fee amounts to approximately 169,000 dollars. Um, and, um, I, I would like to see, uh, the, uh, equivalent impact of that on actual BMR housing, um, increased as substantially, uh, as possible in order to make this, um, request for the ability to apply for a general plan amendment more attractive, uh, to council. So that is my motion. And I see Councilmember Moore has her hand raised as well. Councilmember Moore.
Um, okay. Uh, thank you, Mayor Paul. Uh, I just want to mention, and, uh, you know, someone can check my math, but it looks like if you add AD, ADU one and two up, the square footage divided by the total, you've got, uh, 12% of the units are, are comprised of the ADUs. And, uh, then if you look at it a different way, uh, you've got two ADUs out of the, the six, um, total. Uh, is that right? Yeah?
Yeah, uh, you know, Councilmember Moore, your, your points are well taken. And I think that the applicant, if they're thinking about this creatively, um, you know, should be able to, uh, take a lot of the, uh, pointers and guidance as to what is, um, being desired in terms of potential, uh, adjustments to their approach. Um, and, and come back with, um, you know, a proposal that, uh, I, I think perhaps, uh, can conform a bit better with what the council's expecting if we're being asked to adjust the general plan.
Okay, okay. And the reason I bring that up is because we have our 15% for rent, uh, BMR requirement for residential development or 20% for sale. That's why I brought it up. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for pointing that out.
I'll second your motion.
Oh, uh, Councilmember Moore's already seconded the motion.
Oh, okay.
But thank you very much. And I'm going to go ahead and call the question, seeing, uh, no other hands raised, uh, for the substitute motion.
Councilmember Moore?
Okay, this is, uh, Mayor Paul's substitute motion. Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Uh, Councilmember, I mean Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Okay, very good. Um, you, you know, I, um, I'm leery of, of apologizing because I, I don't feel like that there's anything to apologize about. I, I, I really am appreciative of the time and effort that staff, uh, and council is putting into the deliberative process here. I think, um, the discussions have been very good. Um, however, I think it is, uh, unlikely that we will get past, um, more than one more, uh, item here. We have three more items on our agenda. Um, and so, um, the next item is the CDBG, um, program and below market rate affordable housing fund allocations for this upcoming fiscal year. Um, and so, uh, just by way of advance notice, uh, rather than taking a break right now, I'll just let everyone know that my expectation is that we'll be getting through item number 18, uh, and then continuing items 19 and 20 until our date certain of the next regularly scheduled council meeting of, of April 20th. Um, so, uh, without, uh, further ado on that point, um, we're at item number 18. I see, uh, Carrie Huesler, our, our housing manager, uh, welcome. And I take it that you'll be presenting the staff report for item 18.
So Mayor, Mayor Paul, Ben Fu, George Krimm, Valman here. I will forego any introduction in the sake of time and just hand it off to Carrie Huesler, our housing manager, for her presentation. Thank you.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Paul and council members. I have a brief presentation for you this evening. I will, um, do my best to move things along. And I'm going to share my screen. I'm going to just leave it right there. Okay. So we have the fiscal year 2021, 2022 funding allocations before you this evening. A quick review of the timeline. The annual notice of funding availability, also called a request for proposal, was open from November through February. In March, the Housing Commission reviewed this information and then this evening we're here for, um, for the final decision. So at this time, we are looking at the capital housing funding sources. We're looking at the Community Development Block Grant and the Below Market Rate Affordable Housing Fund. The city is not accepting applications for public services at this time because we are in the middle of a three-year grant funding cycle ending in fiscal year 2022 to 2023. So last year, the city council approved public services and they, they're continuing. So we received official notification from HUD that we have our fiscal year 21, 22 budget. We have a 406, 806,000 dollar entitlement. And the amount we're focusing on this evening is the 317, 587 and 50 cent capital housing funds. And I'd also like to acknowledge that we have $48,000 in unused funds from last year due to, um, some COVID issues with implementing programs that we're rolling over into the pot this year. So here are the capital housing applications we received too and were able to recommend, um, adequate funding for both. Rebuilding Together Silicon Valley is proposing a housing repair and rehabilitation program for low-income homeowners, $97,000. And West Valley Community Services is proposing a continuation of the Vista Village renovation project. If awarded funds, they will continue on with, um, renovating more of the city's below-market rate units. For the below-market rate affordable housing capital funds, we have one application before you. The Westport Cupertino project was approved by city council in August of 2020. As part of the approval, the city's inclusionary ordinance requires 15% of the units to be affordable to qualifying households. In exchange for density bonus concessions and waivers, the Westport project will provide 20% of the units as 48 affordable senior units. The Westport funding application before you today is a request for 2 million in city BMR funds to deepen the affordability levels on the existing 48 inclusionary units. The developer also indicated a desire to include public subsidy in the project to strengthen the tax credit application. As a policy, staff does not recommend use of the city's BMR funds on inclusionary units. City funding of the Westport project will not result in any new affordable units or provide new units towards the city's regional housing needs allocation or arena. In addition, Santa Clara County Measure A funds would provide a tool for deeper affordability and qualify as public subsidy for the tax credit application. I wanted to note that the Housing Commission recommended $1 million in BMR funds after a lengthy deliberation and decision to provide the minimum amount requested by the applicant to show support for the tax credit application. All of our funds come with, um, annual and quarterly reporting and monitoring. We provide ongoing technical assistance. We are on a reimbursement basis, so, um, any application that receives funds will need to, um, follow and maintain compliance and submit quarterly reports and then we will issue a reimbursement. And then for the CDBG program, we do conduct annual monitoring. So I wanted to just call out that, that process. And then for next steps, it would be to adopt the resolution, execute contracts. And then I wanted to point out that the applicants are available this evening to answer any questions. Thank you. This concludes my presentation.
Very good. Thank you very much, Carrie. And I, I would just ask council, uh, to limit this to questions only. Uh, I understand that questions often blend into commentary, uh, but limit it only to questions, uh, of, of staff clarifying the presentation. Uh, so are there any questions at this point? Councilmember Moore? And, and I will be applying a time limit given, uh, our late time at this point. Uh, so we'll, uh, limit questions in this first round to two minutes. Councilmember Moore?
Okay, great. Um, thank you, Carrie. Uh, you showed us a slide where you had, um, two, uh, entities, uh, which would be receiving the grant money. Um, and I was wondering if you could pull that back up? And I was just wondering, um, having been at one of the Housing Commission meetings, um, a while ago and there was CDBG, uh, funding, um, provided for, it, there was a, a, a home, uh, shelter for, uh, victims of domestic violence. Would that, they, was, would this be, um, the same, uh, type of application? But they just like didn't request this round? Is that what happened?
Yes, this is the same pot of funds. We release the capital housing funds on an annual basis. And that project, um, complete, completed their renovations. They were successful. And CDBG funds come with a significant amount of regulation. So I think, um, I think they were happy to complete their project and, and move on. They didn't need additional funding. Yeah.
Oh, you mean, are you, are you suggesting that the, the burden of, uh, providing all the documentation was such that they, um, in some ways might have regretted having had that grant?
No, I just think it's, it's not always, um, an ongoing source. They used it for their one-year project and the, um, yeah, yes, correct.
Okay, and just on that, on that, um, line, do we only have one home, um, for victims of domestic violence in, in the area? And I thi- I thought it was like a four-unit home.
Only one that I'm aware of.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Sure. I think you're muted, sir.
Great. Thank you. I'm muted. Great. Uh, so a- at this point, I'll take it over to the attendees, uh, to, uh, provide any, uh, public commentary. I don't see any hands raised at this point. Um, but if there is a hand raised, you'll need to, uh, raise your hand by the end of the first person's comment in order to, um, uh, be recognized for public, uh, commentary here. Okay, so I will go ahead and take this back to council, seeing no hands raised from members of the public. And, um, I, I see someone named Deanne Everton, uh, with a hand raised. Uh, however, we're at the point where, um, a- a- and so can someone help me out with?
Mayor?
With who Deanne is? Yes, Carrie.
Yes, she is with Rebuilding Together Silicon Valley.
Okay, great. So I, I take it that she's available to, um, answer questions if council has any with regard to, uh, this particular application, um, and, and grant funding recommendation. Okay, so great. Thank you very much and welcome. Um, let me give it back to council to, uh, put forward a motion for discussion, um, so that we can proceed with deliberation. Councilmember Moore?
Okay, um, so I, I move that we adopt resolution number 21-031 recommending the fiscal year 2021, 2022 CDBG and BMR AHF funding allocations and to authorize the city manager to negotiate and execute fiscal year 2021, 2022 CDBG and BMR AHF funding agreements.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, so we have a, a motion and a second from respectively council members Moore and Way. And I also see, um, a, a hand, uh, raised from Mark Trusini, who is a- also an applicant for, for the funding. Um, let me bring it to council with regard to deliberation on the motion on the table. And so, does anybody, uh, care to go first with regard to that? Councilmember Willie? Uh, and Councilmember Willie, you're, you're making the same, uh, late night mistake I did with regard to the mute button.
Just a, uh, quick clarification. You know, so the, um, the adopt the resolution is per the staff's recommendation, not the, uh, uh, other recommendation. Can she just clarify that?
That's a great question, Councilmember Willie. And so, um, Carrie, w- would you like to, uh, speak to that with regard to the motion on the table um, for the approval of, uh, the, the approval of the resolution? Does that reflect staff's recommendations down the line?
Yes, we brought forward the same, um, the same set of funding recommendations to Housing Commission and then again this evening to city council. And we noted Housing Commission's recommendations, um, but it's, but the staff recommendations are in the resolution, correct?
Okay. And can you, um, i- i- if it's, if it's possible, um, tell us where specifically the Housing, um, Commission's recommendations varied from staff recommendations?
Sure. So the, um, we were in agreement on the CDBG funds for West Valley and for Rebuilding Together Silicon Valley. And then on the below-market rate affordable housing funds, staff is not recommending funding the Westport project and Housing Commission recommended a funding amount of $1 million.
Okay, so that's the single distinction between what's on the table, which is staff's recommendation and the Housing Commission's set of recommendations. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All, all right. Um, are there any other comments from our council? I, I will, I will, uh, take this opportunity since, um, the applicant does have his hand raised. Um, I, I, I would like to give, um, Mark Trusini a chance to speak. Um, i- if he wishes to, uh, speak to, uh, his request. And so, Mark, i- if you, uh, would like to, uh, please use this opportunity to, um, express your thoughts on this.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and, and members of the council, Mark Trusini, uh, the owner of the, the Westport project. Uh, what I wanted to do this evening was actually get an opportunity to introduce you to the actually, the Affordable Builder, which is, uh, Pacific Communities. Uh, Mike Kelly is, uh, with us this evening. And, uh, he is the individual that will be moving the affordable component of the mixed-use project, uh, forward. And it includes, uh, 48 senior living units for low and very low, uh, income seniors. And Mike's company is, actually has the expertise in the affordable, uh, arena. And, but I wanted to give the council an, an opportunity to understand where we are with the project and why we're pleased to introduce Mike here this evening. The, the project, uh, was approved, as was mentioned at the city council. It has three product types, townhomes, affordable, uh, senior and, uh, and assisted living, um, community of approximately 158 units. We are in the process of, we have submitted our improvement plans to the Public Works Department. And they're being reviewed now and we, in fact, we just got our first round of comments. We'll be responding back to those and be underway, uh, with our improvements in the July timeframe of this year.
Uh, after we get. Two more minutes, Mark, just to let you know.
Yeah, sure. After we get rolling with that, uh, the next step is for the housing units to, to commence construction, both the townhomes and the affordable units for the low and very low seniors. So I'm going to stop right there. I'm going to let Mike Kelly introduce himself and give you a little overview of the financing of the project. Um, Mike, can you go ahead, please?
All right, Mike, you'll need to unmute yourself as well.
Sorry, this is late for me. Um, Mike Kelly with the Pacific Companies. I'm a partner with them. Uh, we are a, um, affordable housing, uh, development company. We have about 160, uh, affordable projects that we've developed. Uh, we work all throughout the state. We have projects in San Jose, Milpitas, um, uh, Redwood City, um, Burlingame. So a lot, a lot of projects are going on in around the Bay Area. And, um, I'll, I'll be brief to be respectful. And I'll be brief to be respectful of everyone's time because of the late hour. But what I wanted to share with you is that we've submitted for tax credits on this project. And right now, we're sitting in first position to get funded on a $20 million award. And so the relevance of that is that if awarded in June, we would have to break ground within 180 days. And these tax credits are incredibly competitive. They're very difficult to attain. You folks are effectively competing against, you know, against San Jose, you know, Milpitas, and Redwood City. I mean, cities that traditionally are very competitive in the 9% arena. So what we have now is an opportunity to produce a project for you that offers deeper income targeting than what Mark and his group is required under the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance. So when staff, we had a conversation with staff some time ago, and they had recommended that we apply for the NOFA, which we did. So we went through the process, and then we went through the subcommittee and interviewed with them. And our initial request was for $2 million. And they asked us, would you be willing to take $1 million? And we said, yes, we would. That would help the project, whether we're funded this round or if something goes wrong, we can compete another time and have a better tiebreaker. It's all on a tiebreaker system. So things often go wrong in these projects, right? If everything goes right, you know, that's great. But usually, something goes wrong. And this really is an opportunity for the city to participate as a partner in this project. So the affordability levels that we'd be offering are substantially less than what is required by KT Urban. So more specifically, we'd be offering 13 units that are under the 50% AMI level. So by comparison, when you folks funded the Veranda project, you had, you had 15, I'm sorry, you had 15 units there under the Veranda, and we had 13. What we're asking for is $1 million for 13 units under the 50% AMI. So the net-net of that is that we are asking for $167,000 less per unit under the 50% AMI level than what the city of Cupertino funded on the Veranda project. So that's just kind of the effective metrics for the deep targeting. So, you know, when we applied for this, you know, again, when staff sent us a NOFA, encouraged us to apply, we went through the process. And we weren't really aware that, you know, staff had a position to not fund because of no new net units. But we did provide documentation that inclusionary housing ordinances often include and contemplate the ability for cities to provide deeper targeting by providing deeper and additional financial subsidies.
Okay, I'm going to ask you to wrap up at this point, given the lateness of the hour, as well as having gone over a bit of the summary. I think we get the general gist. If there are other follow-ups, I'll ask council to encapsulate them in their deliberations. And so, that will be the gist of my comments and questions. I guess I'll follow that up with the idea of, you know, we do have an approved project with understood benefits that were set forth before us. I think it's interesting that there is an opportunity for additional funding that's being applied for. I would be interested in seeing what staff's input is on that as to whether this truly does elevate the chances of getting that additional funding that was identified. You know, to see what the impression of that is. But I notice, I note that, Carrie, you didn't mention that staff felt that Measure A funding was more appropriate for this type of, this type of request. So I'd be interested in hearing your thoughts on that.
Sure, in reviewing the tax credit regulations, the tiebreakers include, and I can highlight three different categories: land and improvements contributed by an unrelated entity; second, soft loans or grants from unrelated non-public parties; or three, public funds. And that would include Measure A funds or city funds. And so basically, it's not a requirement to have city funds in the deal for the tiebreaker. There's other options as well.
I see. And have Measure A funds been applied for on this project?
We spoke with the county, and they've not been consulted about this project.
I see, okay. Okay, Vice Mayor Chow.
So, my understanding is these units, these BMR units were supposed to be inclusionary, which means the market rate, the 15% BMR. And then the city has done an excess study to determine the 15%. Therefore, the 85% market rate profit from those, 85% market rate units are supposed to be used to fund the BMR portion. So if we are going out to get a tax credit, I understand it's very competitive. You are basically competing for funding that's supposed to be used to build a housing-only project, which doesn't have any market rate to subsidize. So shouldn't the Westport fund this BMR housing using their own profit? Why are we seeking tax credit?
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Did you want to direct that question to staff or the applicant? Or are you clearly making that as a comment?
Yeah.
Okay, I do see a hand raised from Mark Trusini on this.
Sure. Councilmember Chow, let's say it's an excellent question that you're raising. But when we look at the affordable requirements in any city that we work with, we either pay an in-lug fee or you build the units on-site with an affordable housing builder. In this case, the selection of the affordable housing builder was Pacific Companies. And we did that. We had Bridge Housing and also related California housing review the project. And we selected Pacific Companies because they had the wherewithal, the ability to move forward very expeditiously to apply for the state funding, in addition to, as Mike has pointed out, encourage to submit for the city funds. So when I look at the affordable buildings that are going on in the Bay Area, it's a combination of both state and local funding that occurs. The development entity, my firm contributes to land component to the project. And that is a figure that's actually incorporated in the budget numbers that are shared with the state and also been shared with the city of Cupertino. So there is a cost to the market-rate builder, not only the component of the land, but also the loss of those particular units on the site that would have otherwise been built as market-rate units if they were not paid an in-lug fee. So it isn't, we're not looking at this as a situation of trying to ask for something that isn't done in other communities like San Jose and other committees within the Bay Area, where funding is contributed from the city to match up with state funding as well.
Okay, Vice Mayor Chow, did you have further comments at this point?
No.
Okay, any other comments? Councilmember Way.
So may I ask this question? So I saw the staff report that the staff is going to write a recommendation letter. Is this $1 million from the city's BMR market-rate fund would elevate your chances of getting the $20 million? Is that real critical, or does the recommendation letter count too?
I can answer that. So we already provided the development team with the recommendation letter that was solidifying our support for the project. It didn't have a funding recommendation included. The city, the city funding would qualify as a public subsidy, which is one of the categories of a tiebreaker for the tax credit, which gives it a competitive advantage. But it's not required. And we wanted to highlight that the Measure A funding source would count just the same in a tiebreaker situation and also provide subsidy for deeper affordability. So the city funds are not the only option. There's other tools to get to the same end result. And the developer can also provide gap financing or defer some of the developer fee as well. So there's, you know, there's ways to structure the deal to make it feasible, or more feasible.
Okay, so my second question is for the developer. Are there, like, our city staff has suggested, was there time for you to apply for other things to make your application more, value higher?
No, so, so a couple of things. One, Measure A triggers prevailing wage, right? So that is a completely new deal. And that's mostly, it's almost always permanent support of housing. That is not what we're proposing on this site. That blows the budget. And the point that I shared earlier is the fact that we are probably already going to achieve these tax credits. We're in first position. We wanted to announce this to you folks. We're actually in first position to get funded this round. So we've already been working with staff to get the application. Gian has been totally helpful with us. I mean, the Tax Credit Allocation Committee has had a lot of requirements of staff, and he's been super helpful in collaborating with them. So it's not about tiebreaker. That's not the narrative here. The narrative is, we're likely going to get funded, and we're asking for just $1 million to help out if you guys want to partner on the project, because things can go wrong. You know, budgets can go bad. You know, we're already getting bids that are higher than expected. Interest rates are going higher. So if something goes wrong, which they often do, it's really, do you guys want to be part of this project? You know, and if not, like, we accept your decline, not a problem. But if you do, it's only $1 million, which is $170,000 less per unit to get the deeper targeting than you have on previous projects. You know, and, you know, with respect to just applying in the first place, you know, I mean, your very own Inclusionary Housing Ordinance does say, it expressly says, that you can offer financial subsidies for deeper targeting. So we didn't realize staff had a position that was different than your own ordinance. So that's why we went through the process of applying for all of this and saying, hey, you know, do you folks want to partner on this? And, you know, if not, we accept, we'll figure it out. But things can go wrong. And, you know, if the bids come in in a fashion that don't jive with the application, then, you know, we'll have to pull the plug and maybe revert back to the initial plan that we have with KT Urban to do the higher affordable level and not offer the 30% and 40% AMI levels. And that's, you know, that's kind of the dance that we have going on right now.
Thank you, thank you for that explanation. And we have, we have Councilmember Moore with her hand raised. Councilmember Moore.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. I just have a quick clarifying question. So if you were to use Measure A funding, the issue is that that kicks in prevailing wage. Did I hear that correctly?
That's correct.
And what does that mean exactly?
Well, it means that the costs will be significantly higher than what we budgeted for now. So we're a vertically integrated company. We're our own general contractor. We have our own captive insurance company, so we can control costs. But things can still go wrong. So we have, when we submitted for the tax credits, one of the things that made us very competitive is that we were to go in with cost assumptions that we have, right? So if we were to go after prevailing wage, because we were aggressive on cost. And that's how we're now in first position, because that helps our tiebreaker. But then if we go after Measure A funds, which we don't have time to do it now, it would trigger prevailing wage, and it would completely blow the budget. So again, you know, back to my previous point is, you know, if we are awarded, we have to literally break ground within 180 days, or we have to return all of those tax credits. The Tax Credit Allocation Committee, they don't give you any leniency on that at all. So to get awarded these funds and then go chase Measure A funds and try to be reliant on that, that makes that whole scenario completely infeasible, not just from a budget standpoint, but also from a timing standpoint.
Okay, thank you very much. And Councilmember Way, you have your hand raised again?
Yes, I have a short question. I was just listening. So you're asking the city to partner with you to provide affordable and low-income housing. And so this $20 million is a state. And to force the city to get $1 million, you can, you know, break the tiebreaker, you might get a $20 million. So I'm asking this question, since this partnership, is it possible that we can do more for affordable housing? Maybe not within your project, but, you know, I don't know. Be a partnership means, because I think one of the staff's comments is not going to bring more affordable housing units, even when we put $1 million. So is it possible we can partner? If you get this $20 million, we might bring more affordable housing units to our city? That might be worth our $1 million investment.
Is that a question for me? I'm not...
Yeah, or staff, I don't know. It's just a question.
I would just say that, I mean, for us, I mean, your ordinance expressly provides for the opportunity to subsidize projects, inclusionary projects, to offer deeper targeting. I mean, your ordinance expressly provides for that, as do many, many inclusionary ordinances. So I, you know, that's really, that's a decision for council. You know, I don't know how else you would feel to partner with us without the money. But that's, that's probably the best way to partner. And by doing so, you know, you have an integrated say in our operations. I know that you have a level of insight on the project, you know, by virtue of the Inclusionary Ordinance. But by being a financial partner, you know, you have more levers that you can pull. You know, I mean, you're not going to, I can say you're not going to have issues with our property management company. We're very good operators, we're very good owners. But let's just say something goes wrong, you know, and things start going south. By being a financial partner, you're in our books. And so that's just another ancillary benefit.
Okay, great, thank you. And I'm just going to take one more comment before we wrap up. We have Councilmember Moore.
Mayor Paul, are we going to go back to our deliberations and end the question-answer period, or?
We're coming up on midnight, and so...
Okay, so I'll just say that, you know, I am concerned that we seem to be working on a project here that is not going to be paying a prevailing wage. I'm concerned about that. I know that the Valco project, that was one of the stipulations, was that it needed to have a prevailing wage workforce. So I just want to mention that, that I, while I certainly appreciate the affordable units, I'm concerned that we're not going to be paying prevailing wage to the workers there.
Okay, well, I will ask the council right now. We are at midnight. I'll give you the option. Do you want to continue this item along with items 19 and 20? Or do you feel prepared to vote on the motion on the table? Would anyone like to continue this to the May 20 meeting along with items 19 and 20?
I think I'm ready to give a vote.
Okay, I'm not seeing anybody who is asking to continue till April 20. That being the case, and I'm also seeing no more hands for commentary. I will ask the city clerk to conduct a roll call vote for the motion on the table.
Also, Mayor, I just wanted to double-check if you wanted to hear from members of the public, or did you already close the public comment period?
I did, I asked for members of the public to speak, and there were no hands raised at that time.
Great. Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way?
Aye.
Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Mission carries unanimously.
Okay, well, thank you very much. We are at 12:01 at this point. I'm going to go ahead, as stated before, and continue. Items 19 and 20 to the date certain of April 20. And we don't have time, unfortunately, for the remaining items with regard to council and staff comments and future JADA items.
Mayor, may I ask if you'd like to have a vote on the motion? On a motion and vote on the continuation?
Oh, sure, can I entertain a motion? I'd like to set forth a motion to continue the remainder of our, the remainder of our agenda tonight to April 20. Can I have this? Oh, thank you, Councilmember Moore. Any questions or comments from the public? Or further deliberation? Madam City Clerk, could you please take a roll call vote?
Councilmember Moore?
Aye.
Councilmember Way? Councilmember Willie?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Aye.
Mayor Paul?
Aye.
Resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. And with that, we are adjourned and continued for the remainder of our agenda tonight until April 20. Thank you very much, and good night.